Picked one up. Of any new information?
Yesterday, because I didn't push there. So you have to hold that on him. She hit me like way too late last night.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's working?
Yeah.
Meeting of the General Government Committee to order at 1:35. I do have a statement to make and then I'll give Supervisor Jordy the floor if he has a statement, and he's acting surprised. But I do want to talk to everyone here. Some of you were here yesterday for the meeting where we talked about tax ordinance, plus we did go over the actual cultivation ordinance itself with comment from all the board. And I just don't want people to get frustrated over the process and feel like you're not being heard. The cultivation ordinance is being widely viewed by all county residents, resource agencies, and other members of the public. And this is a long process from here. Whatever goes forward from the Board of Supervisors starts going through a SEQA process, and then we'll be going to the Planning Commission and then back to the Board of Supervisors. So really, we're just at the beginning. And what we don't know is what will happen in November with the elections, and a lot may change as a result of that. But my final comment is that, from what I heard after we were out of session yesterday, I do not appreciate whomever it was, or maybe not only one individual, but maybe several, that confronted staff, county staff, and also a county consultant. They're just doing their job to advise the Board of Supervisors. And if anyone is frustrated and wants to get in anyone's face, please come get mine, not county staff nor a county consultant. We just all need to keep this very diplomatic and so we can move forward. And it just, what occurred yesterday in the hallway is not, when I heard about it, is just not acceptable to me. So having said that, we are going forward. I think everyone has an agenda. So I'd like to start off with our staff. Please go forward.
And roll call.
Oh.
We're both here.
Sorry.
Good afternoon.
You gotta put it on this agenda.
Good point. So Supervisor Jordy?
Here.
Chair Brown?
You just heard from me.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have the discussion and possible directions of staff regarding a draft medical cannabis cultivation ordinance and medical cannabis cultivation site zoning regulations. Here we go.
Good afternoon, General Government Standing Committee, Syracuse Executive Office. I just want to start with some introductions. Like you said earlier, we had additional documents that came in and public comment letters. For those of you in the audience, all of it is uploaded on our website, so if you have your tablet or smartphone, you can review it. Copy's in the back. We also have, we're working on getting a new map. There is some map confusion during the publication process, so we're working on that. We're here today to bring back the ordinance with the changes that you directed with us and go over past public comments. So we have just a little overview up front. We'll start with introductions, move to the setback discussion, planning permits, zoning regulations, the agriculture ordinance, response to public comment, and items that came from yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Planning and Building.
Thank you, Andy Gustafson, Chief Planner. So today, we're going to revisit the setback issue. A point was made by the number, by a member of the public regarding the feasibility of applying the 200-foot setback on the five-acre parcels and was able to show that on a typical or likely five-acre lot, that the interior area that should result on a five-acre piece would be little or none, and thus would preempt, in that setting, the opportunity for a place to establish a cultivation site. We revis, I revisited the setback issue, and before you is an exhibit which, and I hate to say this, I believe shows either, well, it shows either 100-foot setback or a 200-foot setback option. That's the map confusion we intended to show you today, the effect of the 200-foot setback on a variety of lots in a real-life setting that was previously presented to you in Fort Bragg, Comche, and Redwood Valley, to show you the effect of changing that setback from 200 feet to 100 feet. The conclusion is, staff is recommending that a 100-foot setback be established rather than a 200-foot setback, that we continue to have the opportunity to reduce that setback further so as to allow a reduction in cases where it's necessary with the use permit to no less than 50 feet. But for illustrative purposes, it was, I thought, useful, and we, I think, have printouts from Mary Lynn Hunt that show the difference between the two. Is that correct?
Yes.
What we have are, I think what we have here illustrated is a 200-foot setback on a variety of lot sizes. The large properties are shown, the properties that are 10 acres or more are shown with the green interior areas. The setback area is shown in the red crosshatch, and you can see that in both of these different, three different locales, that the larger 10-acre-plus lots with a, let me look at the photograph.
Give me that.
Should we do that? Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, this, what we're looking at right now is the 200-foot setback up on the screen. What is missing from this exhibit are the properties that are in the 5- to 10-acre class, which, if you apply the 200-foot setback, you see very few of those would have remaining interior area. I call your attention to the few yellow interior lots, particularly in the Comche in the upper left, and I think that was the only lot in the five-acre class that would come into, that would have a resulting grow area that could be developed.
This is the 200 feet?
This is 200 feet.
I see one area in Fort Bragg at the bottom of the map.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's a very tiny one on the Comche down here.
Oh, yes. Supervisor Jordy just pointed out, well, with the 200, no, that's 100 feet.
The point is that at 200 feet on those 5-acre-plus lots, there are not many in this type of rural residential setting that would qualify. The 100-foot setback, which is shown on the second exhibit, shows that those 5-acre lots now have feasible growing areas. What this also does illustrate is for irregular-shaped lots, there may be an irregular interior area where growing might be permissible, and that if we have the capacity with a use permit to reduce the setbacks on these irregular lots, that would be the best remedy to do so, because this exhibit does not show necessarily existing development on the property, or maybe some unusual topographic condition that might prevent development within the interior area.
Sure.
So based on this, it's staff's recommendation that the 5- and 10-acre lots, 200-foot setback from the property line be revised to 100 feet, and that we continue to have the use permit as a tool to reduce that setback to 50 feet on a case-by-case basis.
And I'd like to comment, if I may, Supervisor Jordy. I do support staff's recommendations, both, and that is the 100-foot setback option along with use permit for smaller setbacks.
Right. Now, the recommendation that was previously made for 100-foot setback from the adjoining residential unit continues to remain the same.
Okay. Supervisor Jordy?
Just for clarification, on the map with the 100-foot setback, it shows 50-foot setback for cottage on the 2 to 5 acres. So is the 100-foot with the 50-foot allowance in the R2 zoning also?
The setback requirement isn't tied to the zoning, it's tied to the minimum lot size for the permit type. So for the cottage permit, which allows, which requires a lot greater than 2 acres, no more than 2,500 square feet of outdoor cultivation or mixed light, 50 feet is the minimum setback area. The other two, 5- and 10-acre class permits, call it, are now going to be the 100-foot All right, it sounds like we got clear direction on that matter, okay? So yesterday, the question regarding planning permits, the difference between zoning clearance, administrative permit, and use permit was brought up, and I thought I would spend a moment just to outline the purpose of each and how then, in our zoning regulation that's proposed, they're being utilized. So the zoning clearance is a type of, it's not a permit, it's literally a review of any development that comes into the department, where planning staff takes a look at a building permit, for instance, and establishes that the proposed building is a type of use that is permitted in the zoning district, and that its location and height complies with the development standards associated with the district. It's done at the time of an application, it's very quick. There are instances in conducting that zoning clearance, we identify a need for a variance because the house is proposed too close to a property line, or maybe the use is a type of use that requires a use permit. And the zoning clearance in that situation would not be granted, it would be put on hold until the project proponent completes the planning process and maybe a use permit or a variance, and then once that planning permit is obtained, the zoning clearance is granted and the project moves forward. It's really our planning safety trigger that we use to help to assure as-of-right development can occur and not conflict with zoning. So that is a ministerial approval, it's not appealable, and is the quickest turnaround, typically within a week, sometimes the same day it's turned in. The administrative permit is a type of discretionary permit, but it's a higher level of review. It requires that typically, an administrative permit is reviewed by the senior planner or myself, the chief planner, and it's a deeper look into compliance with maybe an area policy or with some other aspect of the project that may necessitate a confirmation that the proposed use will not create a land use conflict. Examples of administrative permits that we issue include family daycare, not family daycare units, family, family care units, thank you, where we're validating that the occupant of a family care unit is there for a legitimate purpose to take care of a sick family member, and it provides us a way to register that unit, that use, and in the future, we can come back and help to make sure that the unit doesn't turn into a permanent unit, that it's only there for the time it's needed for a sick family member. So it's, there's some, it's a deeper level review, and it's a way for us to get on a record that we have a particular use and it's been reviewed and approved. That review is relatively quick, it's a matter of a couple weeks typically. Usually, we get those done within a month, and it's, again, a fairly routine thing which does not require public hearing. Now, I'll say that there's an exception, that at the discretion of the chief planner, should there be, in some instances, a circumstance that might necessitate or justify a public hearing, at the discretion of the zoning administrator, it can be brought to a public hearing. Examples of that might include...
Come on, Mary Lynn.
I was gonna say Dollar General, but that wasn't one. Yeah. So we do have, we have had instances, well, I'll say, a zoning violation determination sometimes might rise to a level where it gets to a public hearing. The third level of review is for clearly discretionary projects where, in this case, we're proposing minor use permits, and that's the tool we use to be able to clear, to evaluate a wide variety of issues associated with the project beyond the enumerated development standards in the zoning ordinance. So we look at more things than just setback, use type, and height. We were looking at, does it fit the residential character? Are there activities associated with the use that might be detrimental to the people living and working in the area? Do we need to have conditions to control the hours of operation to avoid late-night noise impacts? It's those sort of effects that are associated with the project that no one can predict in advance, but we want to know, we have a tool to take a look at an individual situation and tailor the appropriate controls or conditions of approval to make it, to help it fit. That type of an exercise, that discretionary review, is by state law and by our zoning code, requires a public hearing, and whenever we do have a discretionary permit, we do have to conduct SEQA review, typically in this county, because we have, in some instances, we get to exercise the SEQA exemptions that are listed when it's a minor modification or an addition to a use, and it qualifies for that exemption. But typically, we're having to prepare an initial study, and when we go to the hearing, to the Planning Commission or to the zoning administrator, there is a SEQA document that gets certified at the same time. Those, the certification of the SEQA document and the approval of the use permit are two separate discreet decisions that can be appealed, and in this case, would be appealable to the Board of Supervisors. Because it's a public hearing, there's due process noticing required, preparation of documents, make it a longer process. So we tell people to typically expect six months from the time of complete application to a hearing. The important thing about that tool is that we are able to be, to look at a use that might be generally appropriate for an area, that's consistent with the intent of the zoning district, but on occasion, depending on scale or the unique location or attributes of the site where it would be placed, warrant a closer look to make it fit. Again, that's why we have use permits. You know, I think of it as, one way I conceptualize is, it's like a volume control. We can, we have a dial we can turn to dial in the intensity or the activity so that it fits the setting and doesn't overbear, versus if we didn't have that use permit as a tool, we would have to say yes, no, and if there's any doubt whether it fits, for sake of, you know, being a steward of the environment and protecting community character, we would most likely be in the position of having to say no a lot versus a use permit which says yes, but, you know, with conditions. So that's the importance or power of a use permit.
So can I ask a question?
In the regulatory scheme?
One sec. Supervisor Jordy?
So when I think of use permits, I'm trying to think of different examples. And so one example I would think in kind of almost the one extreme would be, most cities in California, most communities will require use permits with total discretion on for gas stations. And I know County Minnesota is an exception here, but most, I believe, cities in California will require a use permit, and it's totally at the discretion of the city whether or not they approve the gas station. And generally, gas stations propose to be built at intersections, usually where there's a traffic light. But, and so the city would normally have total discretion whether to approve the gas station. And then on the, this, at least one component of this proposed ordinance is the standard that, as we just discussed, the 100-foot setback being the norm with an allowance, but not a given, that the person could potentially go to 50 feet. And so to me, that's a, that's a different judgment call about whether or not you go from 100 to 50 feet or 75 feet from the property line than whether or not it's allowed or it's not allowed here on this piece of property, like in the gas station example. And so I guess I'm wondering, regardless of how our current structure is set up, since we are talking about a new ordinance, could we create a discretionary decision from the zoning administrator, from the chief planner, senior planner, that is just on issues like that, on deciding the 50 feet, 100 feet, 75 feet, somewhere in between? And it would, and could the board, if it chose, because we did hear from Supervisor Woodhouse who, and there may be others on the board who, maybe including myself, who don't want to take that upon an appeal? And could the board write a, could we adopt an ordinance that just delegated that to a staff person? Because the right that's in the ordinance, as it's contemplated, is 100 feet from the property line. There is no right closer than 100 feet. There's a possibility of less than 100 feet, but that would be at the discretion of the designated person on behalf of the county. And I get, this is, I don't know, maybe it's a legal question, but could the ordinance be structured so that that could be, on a decision like that, that could be delegated to the staff person if the board said, we don't want to take that upon appeal? The right was 100 feet, it wasn't, it wasn't less than 100, there was an option of less than 100, but that was based on the facts on the ground, as determined by the designated... than 100, but that was based on the facts on the ground, as determined by the designated county employee.
There is a way to do that, and that would be to establish criteria which would essentially be very focused findings in the code, that would be used on a case-by-case basis to establish that the reduction can occur without an impact. So, for instance, an example drawing from our agricultural buffer is, we have, I believe, in our ordinance and our policy in the general plan, saying that we can reduce the 200-foot ag buffer when there's intervening topography, or vegetation, or things that essentially, physically, will help buffer the potential impact. In this case, with the cultivation ordinance, we could have similar-type criteria that would be evaluated, and while there's an element of discretion, it becomes a lot clearer what the components of the decisions are that allow for a supportive, you know, a decision to allow a reduction or not. So, it would be instructive, and I think helpful, for us to have that type of criteria included with a use permit associated with the reduction of 100-foot setback. And furthermore, it would, that use permit, that reduction, would be laser-beam focused only on the matter of a setback, it wouldn't get into the merits of a cultivation site on the property generally, it wouldn't, you know, get into any other issues, it would just simply focus on the argument for or against the reduction of the setback.
Deputy County Counsel Matt Kudrowski, just to clarify, are you talking about on appeal, or on the actual original application? I heard you use the word appeal a couple of times.
So, the concept I was floating was, someone comes in and says, "I want to build within the 100-foot setback." The process that I'm contemplating is, it goes to a designated county employee, the administrator, but the ordinance would be structured, at least my preference would be, and that's the final decision. If you don't, if you, the applicant, don't like the decision, you were, you know, the circumstances did not align with getting less than 100 feet, your recourse is not to appeal to the board of supervisors, you know, of course, anybody can go to court, but again, by right, the ordinance specifically said it was 100 feet, and then these would be the types of reasons why it would be less than 100 feet. And presumably, the staff person, the documentation showed that there weren't valid reasons in that particular case why it should go less than 100 feet.
So, then, if I may, then, to do so, you would have to have very prescriptive standards, either measurable, or that can be evaluated based on evidence submitted, that, and I'm going to bring up examples, that there's vegetation of sufficient density and area to provide a buffer, or that there's a topographic feature that would shield the adjoining property from any effect of, in this case, a grow, or whatever other type of attribute that would allow for a grow to be closer than 100 feet, that would be necessary. You'd have to have those type of, check-the-box type of criteria, and then that could be, that's no longer discretionary, that's ministerial, and it wouldn't be appealable.
Mary Lynn's bringing up, you could also just do an administrative permit, which is just a lower-level discretionary decision as well. In terms of an appeal, one I wanted to clarify, zoning clearances are appealable, that was Dollar General. Second, though, is, if we, well, if we wanted to structure the ordinance that there was no appeal to the board of supervisors, and the decision was final, then we could see more action in court, and it can be helpful to have at least one layer of an appeal here locally, so we know what, we can understand what's going on, and have everything fleshed out in front of us locally before we go to court.
However, if someone wants to sue, they could, they just, would be suing after the appeal.
But again, exhaustion of remedies does give the county an opportunity to kind of relatively fully vet the issues that are at stake, as opposed to doing it for the first time in front of a judge.
So, if I could, just one final point, so, again, using little Fort Bragg example, so someone pays their water bill, and their water bill was higher one month, and they said, "Okay, there must have been a water leak, it wasn't my fault." They go to the finance department and ask for the bill to be lowered. The finance department director, if he or she chooses, decides there's a good case for that, or no, you were out of town, your kids had a party, and that's why the water bill went up that month. Whatever, they deny the appeal, they, or they deny the appeal in that case, in this case, Fort Bragg, is not to the city council, it's to the city manager, or his or her designee. And so, I'm wondering, what in state law requires us to make the board of supervisors the ones that hear the appeal?
None. The construction of our zoning ordinance has set up that matters, a minor use permit heard by the zoning administrator is appealed to the board of supervisors, that could be redirected to the planning commission, for instance, and then, any decision they make can be then further appealed to the board.
Well, I guess, but my question is, could it be, could this particular subject be structured so that there is some other appeal board, other than the board of supervisors? Or appealed a designated county employee?
I think SEQA may have to. I'll have to look into the issues some more, if it's SEQA, it may have to go to the final decision-making body, but I think there's potential that you could say the planning commission is the final body that can hear the appeal, and after that, it would go to the court, as opposed to an appeal to the board of supervisors. But I can do some more research on that.
So, do you want to look into that more, or you're pretty sure about that?
I'll start looking into it now, but I'll see how fast I can get an answer.
Okay. I don't know if the majority of the board wants to do that, I'd heard that concern raised by Supervisor Woodhouse, and I tend to agree with him, that our agendas could get overwhelmed if a bunch of people decided to appeal.
Appreciate what you have brought up, and we also, for those of you that were not at the board meeting yesterday, Supervisor Dan Hamburg is recusing himself from further deliberation on the cultivation ordinance, the tax measure, and any other business that has to do with this matter. So, that means there's four supervisors now that will be the decision-making body, and Supervisor Jurdie just said he heard this from Supervisor Woodhouse yesterday at our meeting, and tends to agree with them. So, what do you want to direct staff to do, Supervisor?
Well, my preference would be to try to set up a structure, as I just described it, assuming it's legal.
So, we'll put that on the side menu for the moment. Correct, Matt? Okay.
Yes.
So?
So, that takes me through item three and into item four, and we kind of touched already on the zoning regulation and the recommended change to the setback from 200 to 100 feet. At our last meeting, we reviewed globally the zoning ordinance, and I don't know if there's been any questions or issues that have come up subsequently on your part, but there were some things we wanted to call your attention to in the zoning ordinance. First, in the regulation itself, and let me grab my copy. No, not the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance calls for areas in the county, and it lists all the districts in table one, this is on page two, and it lists across the top the different permit types that will be a part of the M2C3P, and establishes, then by the zoning district, listed down the bottom, along the rows, the different approval processes. Generally, what we're, what we're doing is providing opportunities, or directing opportunities to grow in areas where the impacts would be least, which would be generally the rural, excuse me, upland residential, rural lands, and then, resource lands, excuse me, and then the industrial, I-1, I-2, and Pinoleville Industrial, where zoning clearances would be granted to pretty much all the different permit types, except for in the outdoor, we wouldn't be allowing outdoor grows in the industrial districts, or in the medium or large-size configuration. But that is essentially, you know, directing grows where the effects of marijuana cultivation are going to be contained on a site where there will be little or no environmental impacts to adjoining properties. Then, we go to the more sensitive land uses, which are the smaller lot residentially, R2, R5, and R10, and we, depending on the permit type, and which relates to the scale of the grow, we will allow for, or the outdoor grows, small and medium, are allowed with, in the R2 and R5, with an administrative permit, which I discussed earlier, it's a way to check, to make sure the zoning is correct, they adhere to the setbacks and so forth. And then, highlighted in your table, under the medium outdoor grow, are AP/UP. We're looking at that and suggesting that these larger grows on five-acre lots really should have a use permit, because the potential for impacts to the property are not only environmental or neighborhood compatibility, but also the effect of introducing this type of grow in a smaller residential area may frustrate the intent for those residential lots to be developed with residential uses, or we may even see the potential for people to aggregate small lots that adjoin one another to create a larger combined lot to qualify for a 5,000-square-foot grow. So, it may be that by allowing this higher and more intense or beneficial use on these rural residential lots, that we begin to frustrate the intent that these lots be developed with residential uses, or subdivided to be further developed with residential uses. So, in order to kind of insert some caution, or some review, we would suggest, or I'm putting forward, that for medium grows in the R2 and R5 be subject to a use permit, to help to assure that the grow would be consistent with the general plan intention for, or, yeah, intention for the area. And this would also be true, we would also go further with the mixed-light grows, which are greenhouses and hoop houses, where it's just not a one season, one crop per season, but the potential of three, or possibly four crops per season, and just increases further the highest and best use value of marijuana cultivation, and may out-compete development, full development towards a residential use, which is the intended purpose in those zoning districts. So, that, those two highlights are, it's a, it's a, I'll call it a philosophical shift to, as a caution, to look at what might occur on a smaller residential lot where the intent is residential uses for the support of good neighborhoods, and create a situation where we might be, if we allow greenhouses, medium-sized and large-size greenhouses, or outdoor grows, we may be working at cross-purposes with the resident, the intent that it be a residential area.
Sure, and when you talk about the highlighted, yellow highlighted, that's pages three and four?
On pages, I'm sorry, on page two of your, of the zone...
But it goes further to explain it in the following pages, right?
Right, right.
And Eddie, can I clarify for people who are either watching on TV, or don't have a copy in front of them, that that pertains to the 20, actually, 2,000 square feet or above, really? Because, but, in that, that same zoning of R2 and R5, there, with an administrative permit, there would still be the possibility of the 500 to 2,000 square feet.
Yes, yes.
Mixed light.
Right. No, this would only apply to those that are larger than...
Larger.
Yeah, 5,000 square feet or more.
Really, really more than 2,000?
Yeah, the middle and median grows. So, yeah, this table is duplicated, and it's the same in attachment B, and then, attachment G is more of a narrative, talking about the issues, the planning issues, associated with the different grow planning requirements. That was a major issue to call your attention to. We did talk more about, and I think in the context of the M2C3, we'll talk about the date which the program applies, not a sunset date, but a cutoff date, whether it's January 1, 2016. Everything else in this ordinance will mirror or duplicate what the ag ordinance says in terms of properties that qualify, or grows that qualify to be approved in these various zoning districts. Anything else?
Are you talking about the, are you checking about?
Yeah, yeah.
On page two, attachment G, on item number one, there was consensus of the board in direction that anyone cultivating in TPZ or forest land prior to January 1, 2016 would be eligible for a cottage permit. In addition, there was direction that if you participated in the former 9.31 program, that on a use permit basis, we would consider allowing you to grow what you were permitted prior to grow. The question before you is, would you like to extend that to people that are participating in the urgency ordinance that is past that January 1 deadline for the grandfathering in, but that is something to consider, if you would also like to apply that same principle to the urgency ordinance, so that would enable people who got a license to grow 50 plants or 99 plants in those two zones to apply through a use permit to essentially grow what they were growing?
So, before I answer that question, could I ask, I would like to ask another one. So, how does the proposed ordinance contemplate, if it all, if it does contemplate, what happens in 2018? So, a concern that's been raised is, and I share it, which is, what happens in 2018 or thereafter, and someone comes in and comes to Minnesota County, and now wants to grow in some of these other zonings like TPZ, what, if anything, is the county doing to put the brakes on that, or?
So, right now, in the ordinance, you had to been growing before January 1, 2016. There are no new grows in TPZ and forest land, and that's what's currently in the ordinance. So, if you come through our doors in 2018 wanting to grow in TPZ, and you didn't prior to January 1, 2016, you're out of luck.
Okay.
You need to go to a different zoning district.
But, the question...
Yeah.
Is under the urgency ordinance as well.
Well, I think with that clarification, I mean, I think if someone did apply for the urgency ordinance, we've already, well, presuming that they not only applied in the urgency ordinance, but they were actually issued a permit...
Received a permit.
Because they complied with all the other steps.
We have that in there currently, but that's why we highlighted it, because we wanted confirmation that you would like to include them, as well as the participants from 2009 and 2010.
Well, that'd be... Well, that'd be, again, my assumption would be if they applied and they were approved because they did comply with the other issues, then I'd be okay with that.
I would as well.
Okay, we will keep it in.
But we have to be extremely careful because we do not want to ravish the.
It still would essentially be allowing, you know, no new cultivation once the ordinance is adopted.
So really, the highlighted, two highlighted portions of the zoning section, the chapter or Attachment G, is the changes we wanted to call your attention to. I think if you want to talk more about the appropriateness of the planning level of review based on the permit types and lot sizes, we could look back to the map exhibits and kind of get a sense of how that, how those planning permit tools can help resolve potential conflicts between adjoining lots. And I don't know if it'd be worth it to do that. Oh, this exhibit up on the screen now shows how the two setbacks that are listed in the zoning ordinance work together. The first is a, this is an example of a cottage grow site where there's a two-acre minimum lot, and the red area reflects a 50-foot setback from the property line, and the blue hatched area represents the 100-foot setback from a neighboring residential unit. So you can see that the interior area has, in some cases, bites out of it as a result of that 100-foot residential unit setback. But the remainder green area would appear to be sufficiently large to accommodate a 25,000, 2,500, excuse me, square foot outdoor grow or mixed light grow. And also in this area, in the cottage permit, there are, we have two classes of indoor grow. One is a 500-square-foot maximum, and the other is a 501 to 2,000-square-foot maximum in indoor grow. We would allow that 500-square-foot indoor grow, which is equivalent to a two-car garage, a one-car garage, excuse me, is that right? It's two-car garage, I think it's like 200 square feet per parking space. So it's a little bit more than a two-car garage, would be allowed with a zoning clearance. And then if it goes up to 2,000 square feet, between 500 and 2,000 square feet, we would require an administrative permit. I might add here that an indoor structure, which, like a garage, would be subject to the zoning setbacks. So depending on the zoning district it's in, it could be as little as six feet, or it could be larger, as much as 20 feet. So a indoor grow could actually come closer to the property line than 50 feet, which is applicable to an outdoor grow, but never closer than 100 feet to an adjoining property line. If I had a, if we had a pointer, you can, well, by reference, you could see the upper left corner of that parcel. You could envision how in an indoor grow, a garage-sized structure could encroach upon that crosshatched area and still remain outside of the 100-foot setback for a residential So there is, there is flexibility at that two-acre size with the 50-foot property line setback for all the different types of grows that would be permitted there.
So a question on that, in terms of indoor, is a, I don't know, is a glass sunroom, is that considered a structure and therefore?
No, we're just, we're, mixed indoor artificial light cultivation type would be treated as same as a detached accessory structure subject to the property line.
So exclusively indoor lighting or artificial lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I don't know if there is any other sort of scenarios you want to walk through, it comes to mind, we can use.
And it may come up during public comment.
Okay.
So then we can come back to you and ask you to walk us through.
So moving on, Chuck Morris, Ag Commissioner for the county. Thank you, Chair Brown, Supervisor Jurdie. We'll go through the agriculture ordinance as it's amended before you now. These are reflections of the meeting last Friday. And I'll go through these page by page, hopefully fairly quickly. If, please interrupt if you want to stop or want to ask a question or need time, please stop me and we'll discuss items as we go. Sure, thank you. Wait for this to come up on screen so people can follow as well. So recent legislation that passes and cleanup legislation that has been passed and signed by the governor changed, removed marijuana out of the titles and now it's cannabis. So throughout the document, you'll see where MRSA is now changed to Merxra or something.
Mixra.
Mixra. So you'll see that throughout, that's on page one. Same thing on page two, just editorial in that regard. Going forward to page four, definition of legal parcel. It was requested that we not use the contiguous parcels definition, so we have gone back. This was brought up yesterday at the full board meeting as well. So you can see there the language that Andy mentioned yesterday as well.
So what page was that?
Sorry, page four.
Four.
In the definitions section, legal parcel. So that's what we're proposing to replace the prior language that is lined out there. On page five, I inserted a definition of third-party inspector. This was in response to the comment letter from the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. They have a third-party program or inspector program that was very close, and they requested that we more clearly define inside our ordinance that to keep the distinction. I didn't see an issue with that, so I just added that in. Moving on to page seven. Item number, or letter C, capital C. This has to do with the wattage allotment. Again, this is an overarching, these conditions, this section point 040 in the ordinance is our overarching conditions of cultivation. So they would be inclusive of patients and caregivers as well as our cultivators. So to a certain extent, a limitation or at least an established maximum on wattage appears to be an appropriate move in that the, hopefully conservation of resources. There are many points for it. It's been changed, it carried over. The original ordinance had six watts per square foot, basically. Have had discussions and comment letters as well that have talked about anywhere from the mid twenties to up to 40. That balanced with the research that I had done independently, so I think 35 is a pretty good number right there. I did want to point out that there's also a sentence that was added in there about the indoor cultivation, medical cannabis shall not rely on fossil fuel generators for a source of power. This is a sentence that's actually a carryover from the urgency ordinance. This was not previously in. In the urgency ordinance, it speaks to diesel generators. In discussions, we thought more fossil fuels might be a little bit better term to use there.
I appreciate the language in there. I mean, this county's led the way on solar, independent, off-the-grid, and I think people can pull that together.
So that's, you're in agreement with it?
Yeah.
Question, are you in agreement with the wattage figure?
Well, if you have done a lot of research on it, and I remember at our meeting on the eighth, that there was comment, that I think this, I think this will cover it, pretty sure, otherwise we're probably going to hear about it.
Well, like I said, I've actually had individuals that have been leaving voicemails. We've managed, we've talked face to, I've talked face-to-face with these people and
And I know you've.
The numbers that they're providing to me that they think are appropriate, when we start doing the math, it falls right into the 35 to 40 watt per square foot.
Exactly.
Which is what they would hope to see. I don't think they had done the reverse math. So I think the 35 is actually very close to sustainable for our industry.
Okay.
That needs artificial lighting.
Right, thank you.
And I might suggest that if either one of you have a disagreement or would like to discuss a point more, or let me rephrase maybe, are not in agreement, go ahead and just let me know, please interrupt, and we'll.
And I'm asking him every stretch of the way.
Okay, thank you. Page eight, this was an addition out of the, again, out of the water board letter, added spring and wetland into item F. Starting on page 10, we get into a discussion of the permit types. The discussion we had last Friday about removing plant count, those have been stricken On page 11, section point 080, I wanted to, and this is in response actually to public comment and in discussion with Deputy Counsel Kudrowski, and in consideration of the public comment, if a cultivator wants to maintain their own cloning nursery, few will environment strictly for their own use, no sales, things like that.
Right.
So I'm just giving a heads up. I didn't get any suggested wording in there, but I will shortly, probably after this meeting, along the lines of any square footage allotted to that will be included in and counted as part of your overall permit square footage, something to that line.
And I believe that individual is here and may supply language to help us.
That would be great. The balance of the comments all the way through to, I believe, towards the bottom of page 13 on the document that's going to be on screen. We've already dealt with the setback issue. It is highlighted here, so obviously that will be changing.
Okay.
Just wanted to point that out. And you'll notice that right below that highlighted 200-foot in item four there, it references that ability to reduce the setback, which was, the committee just expressed they want Other editorial changes, when we get to type 1B. The R, so the decisions on the planning table that the chief planner just reviewed with us would guide whether the RR2 and the RR5 stay in the type 1B permits. So I just wanted to highlight those, that those could possibly be coming out, depending on direction here. Remainder of the changes are similar to prior. So the change, I apologize for the pause, the changes all the way through to basically page 19 are duplicative of what we've just gone through, and they're for each permit type, so I won't take our time to reiterate them. On page 20, item F. The, the storage of fuel, fertilizer, pesticides, or other substances toxic to wildlife and children, pets, this is another pull across from the current urgency ordinance. It seemed to be very good language, quite frankly, and it more clearly spells out, I believe, both the intent and some of the language that's in here, trying to address the same thing.
And this is a requirement, I believe, of traditional production ag.
Yeah.
To secure all types of chemicals, fertilizers, fuel, pesticides, et cetera. And so it should be in here.
Okay, thank you. Also on item F, I added the words "and management" when it comes to soil and media. It's something that was just an oversight on my part, but it's become clear that there is an awful lot of soil and media importation and usage, and there's spent, likewise, there's spent soil and media as well, and these can turn into pretty significant piles. If you have a large operation, you're just replacing with new every year. So a plan to address that, you know, there are cultivators out there that are actively working on regenerating their, you know, making their media viable again, which is really, you know, I applaud that. On page 21, the addition of items O and P are, straight out of the water board letter, we discussed this last Friday. This is just implementing what you both felt were, was appropriate.
So just to be clear, Chuck, there was, but there was one comment on their letter that was pretty all-encompassing, where I forgot the term they used, but if it could at some point in the future, you said you weren't comfortable with one part of their suggestion.
Yes, there was an element, and it had to do, back earlier in the document where I added spring and wetlands, it would have been in that section, it had to do with hydrologically connected.
Okay, so that part's not in here?
Yeah.
The part that you were uncomfortable with?
That's correct. On page 22, point 100, this was in response also to the water board, making clear that other state agencies, other agencies, obviously they were thinking of their agency, but it opens up the door to other agency folks being onsite for that pre-permitting site inspection.
And the reason I think that is good to contain within this document is basically, then it gives everyone the heads up so somebody doesn't make a mistake and then face very, very heavy fines.
We're responding to the water boards, and we're, I'm hoping that the third-party program, we will have integral third-party inspectors that are also water board certified. That's a slow process, and it may not be the situation. So I think that's a good addition, quite frankly.
Absolutely.
At the bottom of page 23, point 110, performance standards D. This is, well, the entirety of that, you can see what's been added and deleted there. That is a water board change. I would also add that after, in the highlighted section, obtaining and complying with any applicable, I would add the words "and approved" permit. This addresses another comment letter that we got recently, and, you know, just another oversight on my part, permits can be applied for, but they may never be approved. Something might fall apart or just doesn't happen, so seemed appropriate language to have in there.
I'd like to see that addition. I think Supervisor Jurdie would agree.
Page 23, well, item E. This, we spoke about this last Friday, I believe, at length as well, as far as generators. And then I added the last sentence deals with wiring, and we heard from the. And then I added the, the last sentence deals with wiring and we heard from the CDF representative that there might be a generator onsite that's doing okay, but the wiring associated with it to actually power the, the lighting needs are, is inadequate and they've responded to fires in a response to that. So I added that last sentence
Okay.
To try and address that.
So Chuck
Yes?
A few pages back, several pages back, we had a, there was a sentence in there about a generator, power, lighting source should not be from fossil fuel sources. And now we're talking about a generator. So my, my thinking of a generator is it's a backup energy source. But, so is that the intent here, or do we have two contradictory pieces?
Let me go ahead and analyze that. I might have it crossed up a bit. If I do, I'll, I'll get that sorted out.
Because, I mean, it's perfectly acceptable, someone has a generator as a backup means of power, but I think the primary source for powering the lights, I think, should not be from fossil fuels.
Without finding it right now in the document, I think that was related to strictly indoor grows. I'll have to go back and double check.
So, but what if someone has a mixed light grow? They're still using a lot of power.
If that comment that I was referring to is, is, I believe it's directed towards indoor grows. I'll double check.
Both mixed light and totally indoor? Is, when you say indoor grow, does that apply to mixed, mixed light?
No.
Is it talking about the wattage requirement? The line, additional line under wattage requirement?
Because it seems to me the, the mixed light is also going to use a fair amount of power.
Yeah, the language on page 7C says, "The indoor cultivation of medical cannabis shall not rely on fossil fuel generators for a source of power."
Right, so it's, it's specific for indoor, completely artificial light cultivation only.
Well, but it seems like the mixed light would also consume a fair amount of wattage and, and I don't see why that would need, why that would need a, you know, fossil fuel generator.
The underlying thought here is that indoor grow is going to be powered by a, a grid source, either solar or, or some sort of grid source. It's going to be associated with a building, so hopefully there's power to the facility.
But if something's mixed use, they have sunlight. And if they have sunlight, they can have solar. And, and batteries are becoming cheaper and more efficient all the time. Again, Tesla is about to sort of change the whole world on that with less expensive, more efficient battery power. I don't see the need for fossil fuel, especially given the fact that there's enough light to have, you know, a solarium or a, you know, a mixed use. So I don't know, my preference would be, you're not, you're not growing this with, you know, fossil fuels.
I, I understand what you're saying and I just can't totally support that. I do understand your concerns and about solar. When you look at fossil fuels and the price of them today, the cost, yes, going solar would be much more cost effective, but I, I'm just not willing to totally give that option up.
And just a little bit more input, the, the industry as it exists right now is in various locations dependent on, on the generators, not that it can't change and it wouldn't necessarily change in this. Again, the, the removal of the reliance on fossil fuels was directed strictly towards those indoor grows where hopefully there would be some sort of alternative power source and would not also have to be running a generator.
Okay, we'll just, we'll agree to disagree, but yeah.
Duly noted, thank you.
Just for clarification, could we just leave that as a point, just highlight for the board to
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I think that would be important for the 19th.
Let's see, I believe I was on page 23.
Yes.
Section .110, item F is the next. This is in response to Waterboard. Establish and maintain, establish was added in response to Waterboard and the strikeouts there as well were Waterboard suggestions. We discussed these last Friday and I implemented them here. This was brought up specifically by Supervisor McCowen yesterday to possibly reconsider, so I, I think it would be appropriate for us to reconsider this, or at least come away with if we are, if the committee is in favor of the strikeouts or undoing the strikeouts and maintaining the prior language that we had.
So where exactly are you at?
We are on F.
F, possibly the bottom of page 23.
Correct, and it goes, yeah.
Okay. Slightly small print here. So you're, you're referring to the deleted section off on the right hand side?
So it's the top of 24, actually. I'm speaking to item F.
Um, I believe, okay, go ahead.
Did you want me to read the deleted portion?
So the deleted portion is basically after the Waterboard order. If, comma, if applicable, comma, or any substantially equivalent rule that may be subsequently adopted by the County of Mendocino or other responsible agency. That's what was there before. The Waterboard suggestion or comment had that lined out. We adopted that last Friday. Supervisor McCowen brought it up as, I believe he felt it was appropriate to possibly leave it in.
Can you maybe discuss the significance of this sentence in either form?
I, not being a subject matter expert on this, but I believe Supervisor McCowen explained that it leaves the door open for if we locally establish standards that may not be equivalent to or outside of the Waterboard's order, we still have that option. I think that was the point, if I'm remembering correctly.
And you could potentially put that in and keep F if you, if you'd like.
Right.
I guess I'm not understanding how, I'm not totally understanding the proposal here because I don't assume that we can approve something that the Waterboard hasn't approved, so.
That, the statement that was deleted would leave the door open for us to adopt potentially a stricter conditions than what's established. So it pretty much says, not only, in addition to, you know, establishing and maintaining your enrollment with the Waterboard, you would also have, if applicable, any subsequent adopt, anything that may be subsequently adopted by the County of Mendocino or other responsible agency.
Okay, so it's, it's the, it's just referencing that the county reserves the right to have rules that are stricter, I guess, pertaining to this subject area?
Correct.
Even though we haven't generally, historically ventured into this territory?
Right.
Okay, so I don't know, what do you think?
It just leaves the door open. It, it's not a prescriptive in any way for us to ever do that. If something comes down the road
And this can always be something that we come back to later. I mean, we're going to be seeing this quite a bit over the next five to six months, so.
Then I think it's probably important to include it. So we do have that opportunity in the future.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think keeping the language or adding it back in.
Yeah, adding it back in is proper.
And, and what I'm thinking about is we may get more detailed comments than we've had so far from the agencies that might, you know, suggest certain programs for the county, so.
Okay. Item J, on page 24, that was an oversight on my part and when I was reviewing the current urgency ordinance, I found it, being your sealer of weights and measures, that's fairly embarrassing, but I should have brought across the requirement for scales, so it's in there.
Weights and measures. You're the boss on that one.
Yeah. So that, that was brought across. Beyond that, for the remainder of the document, on page 26. There was a fairly large section that in prior versions was actually highlighted and there was a note that this may, that section may be removed and put into a guidance and procedures manual for third party inspectors. That is the case. I just copied and pasted from .140, the first sentence, brought it up. And then basically made just a cursory comment, "Any dispute regarding findings or outcomes third party inspections, et cetera." That's the substantive change there.
So, could you just describe that, that sentence? All consultation will be, from a third party inspector shall be forwarded ag commissioner's office within 24 hours?
Yeah, so that's a fundamental concept of, of checking on compliance, checking on possible issues or non-compliances that might be occurring at cultivation sites, just so that we kind of have our finger on the pulse, because i- if something comes up, without that information, we won't know if there's issues out there. And then with that constant communication, we'll be seeing, hopefully, the remediations come through with those consultation, subsequent consultations, inspections by the third party inspectors to confirm remediation of whatever may have come forward. That's, that's the idealized plan.
Okay, so someone might even have from their tablet, send something, they're on the, out in the field, it's Friday afternoon, they send it into your office. There may be no one in your office until Monday, but they sent it to you within 24 hours of their visiting the site? Is that the?
We're going to be requesting that, yes.
Yeah.
And, and I think that is a very good point for all third party inspections because it does keep the county informed, the ag commissioner of what's going on, so he doesn't have someone at 8:00 AM on Monday morning showing up and really chewing him out based on a third party inspector. I, it's important that he have that documentation, I, I believe.
Sure, your office could have read it on their tablet at home on the weekend.
On call, on call duty, right? So yes, inspection forms and hopefully photographic evidence, things of that nature could be forwarded from, would be forwarded from the third party inspectors to, to our office just to keep us in the loop.
And I think other certification programs, this is a little bit different, do require anywhere from 24 hour to 48 hours of notification to whomever has a complete oversight and authority, so it gets proper.
Notification in the ag world seems to be the buzzword last year or two and it's, it's not going away.
No, it's not.
Beyond that, at this point, beyond that, just very minor editorial changes under .140. And that is the summation of the changes and also as described in the cultivation ordinance as it, as it stands right now.
Any other questions on this Supervisor? So, who's up next?
Can we take a break? Would it be possible to take a five minute break, 10 minute break?
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
And then we will, then if, well, I'll break and then we'll come back and
Pick up that. We're at number six, response to public comment.
Right.
Duke Cat here on. Is, I think we're looking for the agriculture commissioner, but, so when he gets back in a moment, we will go to response to public comment, and that document is online. You guys have a copy, there's some in the back, and we converted it to slides as well, so everyone can be on the same page. And I'll turn it over to Andy because I think he wanted to ask something.
Okay.
Thank you. So we talked about the, the planning permits, and there were, there were four cells on, on table one in the zoning ordinance, attachment G on page two. And we were giving, we were making the recommendation that the more restrictive option be, be supported, or we were asking that this governance committee to make it, give us direction on whether the most restrictive option were we would require a use permit for medium outdoor grows on R2 and RR5 properties. Those are properties greater than five acres. Or would we continue to allow them with administrative permits? And then the second is a similar question's being put to you. Do we prohibit the medium mixed light grows on the RR2, RR5 properties? Or should we keep a use permit requirement in place on those two?
So, and the recommendations are clearly outlined on attachment B, page two. So you'll see the asterisks by the highlighted items. So on the first one, RR2 mixed outdoor, it has AP or UP. You look below, it says a minimum administrative permit but recommended use permit. Below that, it's the same recommendation. And then you'd look to 1B.
Uh, R2.
RR2 and RR5, similar recommendations. The first one is we recommend it not being allowed, and then below that, a minimum use permit or recommended not allowed. So just direction on what you would like to see in the chart to bring forward on the 19th, or if you'd like to bring that question to the full board.
And there was another statement I'd like to make, and that is, these planning permits are one-time. They're, they're not on an annual basis. So at the start of the program, when somebody commences, they will go through this planning review, and that entitlement runs with the property. Subsec, the, the ag commissioners' ag permit, the M2C3P license, I'll call it that, is an annual renewal, and that, that has to be maintained on an annual basis. And that'll be a requirement of, if there's a use permit required or an administrative permit, that they continue to maintain the license on the property. But they don't have to go back into the use permit or the administrative permit for planning.
Because it's been approved or not approved.
It's been approved, it runs.
Both modifications.
Yeah, if, if you modify it, like any use, if you wish to modify, expand, intensify in some way, relocate your grow, then, then you'd have to come back and, and get a modification to the permit.
Well, my thoughts are, I think the 2,000 square feet is substantial for a two-acre parcel for indoor. And so I think above that, you've got the use permit for above that to, up to 5,000. I guess that my question would be, why would we be, why would we be recommending a use permit for the medium-sized outdoor but not recommending the option for medium mixed light? I guess my thinking is that like a solarium or something is not so substantial that you couldn't take it down. Is the idea that it's planted outside, it's, it's less of an investment?
The, the primary reason that in this case we would recommend that mixed light, in, mixed light medium not be allowed is because it is a highest and best use that may frustrate the intent of a residential district for residential development.
Because of the multiple cycles each year, and so therefore it becomes the primary financial value.
Exactly. Somebody would rather put a mixed light facility on their property or do a lot line adjustment to get it large enough to five acres or more, to get a greenhouse on their property and not be concerned about development, developing the property for a residential use. These, these properties are in the county's rural areas closer to the urban centers like around Fort Bragg or here in Yakaya Valley. And they're intended to be properties that have the capacity to have complementary agricultural activities in tandem with residential uses. This could easily see a change in that dynamic and focus it on agricultural-type use.
So those are general plan?
Policy.
Policies.
Priorities, correct.
Priorities, yes.
So under this matrix, though, they're still allowed to go to small mixed light above, up to 2,500 square feet, just not up to, beyond 2,500 square feet.
Right.
So that, and if someone's getting four grow cycles a year in the mixed light versus one or two with outdoor, they're still getting a substantial value there.
Correct, but it, but it's still, it's not three times or four times the value that might be generated in a greenhouse. And it'd be going, I mean, these grows can go up to 5,000 square feet.
I know what, well, but it's saying, it's a 2,500 square feet mixed light is allowed, but not above 2,500 square feet, so.
Right. That's what's being recommended.
So effectively, 5,000 would be double that, but I'm just saying if someone had four grow cycles or eight grow cycles, they would, they would have that, but on 2,500 square feet or less, not 5,000.
Right. Yeah, if you, it's, it's, uh, 20, it's like, yeah. It's, it's drawing a, a line, there's, we would have to, we would have to do an economic assessment of, of what rents could be generated off a property based on the maximum allowable use. And there's really no comparable use in terms of income generator as an agricultural-type use on these properties. It just is a quantum leap. And so this is proposed as a mechanism to help assure that the balance isn't so tipped towards this high, potentially very high-yield product that no longer is there an interest in maintaining the property for a residential activity, that it would go just straight to a, a high-revenue generating type use.
So my, someone had referred me to a property that has an indoor, and there are, there's at least one residence, I think there's actually two residences on the property, it's outside the coastal zone. And so, and I, I think it's probably less than, it's less than five acres, I don't know if it's more than two. But, so I'm not really sure that you would have a parcel where no one was living on-site. I guess unless there just wasn't enough water for the residents and for the crop, I guess would, it seems to be the only limiting, because otherwise I think the person would have a financial incentive to have, whether they were living on-site or an employee or a relative or a friend living on-site. It seems to me they'd have an incentive to have someone living on-site.
They may, but a case where we have a five-acre parcel in an RR2, it could be subdivided, and you'd have the opportunity to have two houses on each. And, and if it stays as a five-acre parcel, with all, you wouldn't create an opportunity to achieve the residential density contemplated by the general plan for that area.
Okay, so this has more to do with disincentive for people to split parcels.
Yes, right.
Okay, now, trying to understand the public policy rationale there. Because, I mean, there are, for example, the city of Santa Cruz requires that if you have a second unit on your property, you actually have to live in one of the two units. I know that's not common, but they do require that because they're a college town and they don't want to have, you know, like two-party houses, basically. So that it keeps, it keeps, you know, peace in the neighborhood, basically, is the intent, that the, that the property owner lives on either the small second unit or the main house. And so, I mean, it gets kind of complicated for enforcing, especially in a county as large as this. But I'm just saying, the city of Santa Cruz, that's how they've dealt with that permission. I mean, I guess it might be too, too much of a reach to say you have to have a residence attached to this, but I'm not sure.
Well, we, we do have a requirement that a grow have residency necessarily, not necessarily on the property, but in the vicinity, if I'm correct.
On the parcel.
On, on the parcel.
Okay.
So we, we could have a situation, again, in a, in an RR2 where the minimum lot size is two acres, but the property is greater than five acres in size. Ordinarily, it would be a prime candidate for a lot split. But with the capacity, the potential to have a 5,000-square-foot or, or large, up to 5,000 square foot grow on the property, maybe they would rather, you know, not do the lot split and put the grow in, and not have as many houses in, on, developed on the property. That could ultimately occur with the subdivision. So that's just, you know, being mindful of the tension that's being created between this, this type crop, the highest and best use that might be created, and, and the, and the objectives of the general plan for development of these RR rural residential properties for residential uses.
He was not on the board when we passed the last general plan, and all the discussion that went with it.
Okay.
That's the issue.
Okay.
Is this something you would like to make a recommendation in terms of the options, or would you like to bring this item for discussion on the 19th?
I'm going to let Supervisor Jody decide.
Well, I do think that on the, on the two acres and the five acres, going to the medium outdoor, I, I don't see a problem with requiring the use permit, because yours, that seems to be one of your decision points there, is it an administrative permit or use permit?
Mm-hmm.
I think use permit's appropriate for that decision. For the other one, you know, I'm trying to, I, I think I understand the issue because of the multiple production cycles for mixed light, and how that just changes the economic dynamics of the parcel much more dramatically than the outdoor. So I think I get why you're proposing that. I'd like to hear more feedback on it, but I'm, I'm inclined to go with your recommendation on this, which is to not recommend it.
And that's for RR2, and then on the RR5, there's an option for a use permit or not allowed?
Well, I thought you had that on both the R2 and the R5s. Well, I thought you had that on both the RR2 and the RR5s.
On, if you look at the RR2, the recommendation is to not allow it. And then on the RR5, we give two potential recommendations. You could have a minimum of a use permit or you could not allow it.
It's a slash, it's an AP slash UP.
And the use permit is what it's currently sitting at.
Right, right. So the numerator in those boxes is the, the way the chart currently is. The denominator, if you will, or under the slash is staff recommendations. And also those are enumerated by the asterisks below the table.
I think Supervisor Brown probably has more RR5s in her district than I do.
Well, I do think the use permits are more appropriate.
For the medium mixed light?
RR5.
RR5, okay. So none, not allowed on RR2, mixed light is not allowed on the RR2. But with the use permit, it can be allowed on the RR5, okay?
And that's for just the medium, not cottage?
Right, that's all we're talking about.
And then just, then the backup, medium outdoor use permits in both cases.
I think we're saying use permits, yeah.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Well, I believe the next item on the agenda was public comments, response to public comments. Before I go there, I'd like to back up to the ag ordinance. And it is on page seven and it deals with the generator, which we had discussion about. I just wanted to point out that this was a, wait for it to get up on screen, but it's about the indoor generator, the wattage. The wattage was a carryover from last Friday's meeting.
Right.
The addition of the indoor known generator for indoor cultivation. That's a pull across from the current urgency ordinance. So if somebody's permitted for up to 50 plants or up to 99 plants through the sheriff's department this year, their, this is a requirement that is currently in place in the, in the code in Mendocino County. So it was a, it was a straight pull across, but it did not exist in this draft ordinance prior to that. So I don't know if that helps, I just wanted to point that out.
Sure, that does help me. Does it help you Supervisor?
Yeah, I think it's just, what we're wanting for the full board to discuss is on the other section of the code where it references for mixed light, whether or not the board wants to require, you know, non, non-petroleum-based power source.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move on to item six, response to public comment. So as has been mentioned multiple times, we, we have been receiving a lot of good public comment on this. There is a document that I was finally able to get together this morning, so I believe is it posted?
It's posted online, there's copies in the back and we have it on the PowerPoint before you.
So I'd like to go through this document. These, the first three come from the comment letter we received from the Nature Conservancy and Trout Unlimited combined into one comment letter. The, the first one is actually the, so the, it's in a yellow highlight because it was added into, or it was proposed to be added into the document as a North Coast Water Quality Control Board, what's highlighted. I added in the words approved and in response to the Nature Conservancy letter, they made the point that people can be applying for a permit, but sometimes may fall out of the permitting process. They may, may never end up with an actual approved permit for whatever reason. So they're technically not in, this wording addresses that, in their minds it addresses it. This, this was a suggested insertion to address that. The second suggested addition is in red there, obviously. We do have reference in the document that was more broad than this. Deputy County Counsel reviewed this section this morning, this, what they specifically call out, section 1602, the first element of which is to get, get the license or start the licensing procedure. So it, it's just a more parsed out version, I think, of what we had. I don't necessarily see any harm to it, just more explicit, if you will, wording.
And in other words, it's a 1,600 permit as it's commonly known.
Which is what we, what we referenced prior as well. The third suggested verbiage added, and I apologize, I've got the, the section numbers and the pages that you can find those section numbers on after the bolded comments there. Again, in red and it has to do with adding, sort of closing the loop on some of these permits. That wasn't necessarily in our verbiage and, or verbiage and it was pointed out to us. So the proposed addition is, is there in red. And item four, we've already discussed, I believe, the, again, that Supervisor McCowen brought up yesterday about the suggested deletions, et cetera. So we've already covered that one. And just generally speaking, that item five, well, maybe I should stop. Are there any hesitation comments, direction to go ahead and do this, do these suggestions?
Fine with it.
Move forward with them? Okay, thank you. Item five on this document is just, need to go up, well, I'll speak to it, pardon me.
Oh.
So item, item five, I believe it's page one, I may have jumped. At any rate. I just wanted to generally speak to the public comments we've received and we have received numerous comments this morning and today I have not gotten to those. But I wanted to just generally summarize that this document has been changing so quickly over the last five days, quite frankly, that, and for that matter, for the last three weeks or so. So we're receiving public comments that are applicable at one point in time, but at this point in time, many of them may have been addressed or they're being actively addressed. Many today have been addressed. So I just want those people that are submitting those comments to know that we are reading them or receiving them, obviously, reading them and, and taking to heart those, those comment letters. There, there's a lot of similarity and hope, I believe we as staff generally are bringing those items before this committee and obviously before the board as well. So that's really all I wanted to speak to on that and we do appreciate those comments as well. Very constructive. So the, the other element I wanted to do with the committee here today, if we could move forward to the next. So the current 9.31 that we have, the urgency ordinance, if you will, there are a number of items in reviewing that document that I wanted to put forward as considerations for possible carryover into the current draft rewrite. So I've spelled them out here. The, the original 9.31, up until May 16th of this year, had a, an age limit of 18 for, minimum age limit of 18 for employees of collectives, cooperatives. That jumped to age 21, so now the current law in Mendocino County to be a employee of a collective cooperative, you need to be 21.
Is that because of Assemblyman Wood's legislation?
I'm unsure of the reasoning. I'm not, I'm not sure why that jumped. And the, this cultivation ordinance had its origins as the 9.31. So there's an awful lot of carryover, so.
Does that conflict with any federal or state labor law, the age?
Age 18 to 21. I believe we're, County Counsel's gonna have to look into this.
Sure, I, I think that should be looked into.
So I think the part that reflects the state issue is the smoking issue. But I, that's as far as I think the state is going on that.
Oh, because the state recently moved from 18 to 21 for tobacco?
Yes. So I would, I would bet there would be some problems with this, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay, because I, you know, it should, we should look at federal and state labor law as well before we start going forward like this. And I don't know if any other county does put age limitation.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's related to this, I'll just toss it out there. I know that up in the Garberville area, which kind of touches the northern part of my district, that area, that they've had an issue with, you know, people traveling through and the businesses in downtown Garberville have been kind of upset with just the inundation of people at least, at least certain times of the year. And if there's some way, and it may not be in this ordinance, but if there's some way in the regulatory scheme of things that the county could do something that discourages people from just sort of traveling through Mendocino County, you know, to work seasonally in this cash industry because it's now a more regulated industry and people are, you know, getting permits and they're, and they're having, you know, business licenses and they're having employee payroll taxes, which they haven't in the past. If there's anything we can do along those lines, I think it would be popular with the public because I think the public doesn't really enjoy seeing waves of people coming into our county in Humboldt to sort of seasonally work in this, what's been a cash industry. So I'm just putting that out there.
I would just mention in, not MERS anymore, the MC.
Mixra.
Mixra, whatever. What was formerly MERSA. There are at least rules and regulations regarding ag employees in terms of labor law around agricultural employees that now apply to the cannabis industry. But that doesn't go, that doesn't touch on the other aspect, which would be, you know, dispensaries, et cetera.
And I will reach out to the sheriff's office to see if they have any insight on why that was changed. They may have, I'll, I'll reach out to other county staff to see if, if somebody has a line on why this might be a requirement now, we might be able to get a quick answer that way for item A. Item B on the list, again, this, I've got the wording there, I guess in the bold quotes. So that's the current wording, an application requirement inside the urgency ordinance. It's not in the draft document. I, you know, it's, it's your decision or choice to require something like this. It is a current requirement for our cultivators that are being permitted for up to 50 or up to 99. You want me to just run through these and then we can circle back?
Yeah, well, I, I think identification is important.
Okay.
Supervisor Jurdie?
Yep, seems like a pretty basic.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You go into sign up for PG&E, you've got to show a lot of things and ID is one of them.
Okay, thank you. Item C, again, we see the 21 years of age and this is actually the applicant, so we're talking about the cultivator, if you will. The responsible person for the cultivation has to be 21 years of age or older and the quotation is there that's out of the urgency, the current 9.31. Not in the current draft document.
Again, I think that goes back to labor law. Individuals that sell liquor in a liquor store or bars, so to speak. I mean, the labor law has all these limitations on it that we just need to look at it and see where we best fit in. With these recommendations, we're gonna find ourselves in trouble.
Okay, that'll be researched. Item D, the no violent felony applicant and others engaged in management. So there are numerous documents that are going to accompany this, this ordinance at the end of the day. And the, the application's obviously one of the big ones. This element is already in the application process. It's not explicitly spelled out in ordinance, in the proposed ordinance. So it's, it's covered and I, I think when we get down to the next page, we'll get to a.
But may I, may I ask a question on this no violent felony? Is that something then you run your check through sheriff's department?
It would require that and if I'm remembering correctly, I believe the formerly named MERSA program is, requires a criminal background check as well for cultivation. And this, this was a carryover from the prior 9.31, the 09 and 10 version. So it has stayed in, in, at this point at least, the draft application for this program. Item E, outright statement of security measures for safety and theft prevention. Again, that's carried over from, in the application. It's carried over from the prior 9.31. Not explicitly stated in the ordinance, in the draft ordinance. Additional information when it, referring to cooperatives likewise is in the application already. Not in the, not in the ordinance per se. Any of this can be put forward if it's felt, if it's deemed, you know, appropriate or necessary.
I, you know, the violent felony. Now, we have found with Prop 47, felony convictions are no longer felonies. I mean, I don't know exactly.
I picked that up there in a very summary manner. The wording is pretty explicit. It references certain code sections in the penal code and things of that nature and describes a little bit of a difference or a more of a descriptor of violent felon.
Well, I just feel it's important to have that included. Is that?
In the ordinance?
In the, on the ordinance side.
And security measures for safety and theft prevention. I think that's very important for protection of the cultivator as well as neighbors and potential violators.
Item G, proof of need to cultivate. This gets back basically to the fundamental intent of Prop 215, et cetera. Not in the application anywhere, not in the current draft ordinance. Can obviously insert it. It does put an additional responsibility, obviously, on the cultivator to, to provide this information. Again, these, these, this would be in the application portion of, of the proposed ordinance requirements of the application.
So Supervisor Jurdie?
So the question is whether this is in the ordinance or in a policy of the county separate from the ordinance, is that?
Well, it's in 9.31.
It's in the current 9.31 in the section there that deals with the various elements that are, will be required during the application process. It's explicitly spelled out and, and the current draft ordinance has many of those elements as well. This element is not in the current draft ordinance, it is in the current 9.31.
I guess my, what I'm just speculating here, but if, if the county had some policies that could more quickly be amended at some later point, maybe this particular policy might make sense to be in that simply because it seems to be, part of what we're doing here is we're drafting an ordinance that could be quickly amendable and inapplicable should there be some state law passed by the voters, not relating to medical, but relating to recreational? And so that's, I guess, my question.
And there's, yeah, there's two things. So as they, we transition into the, into the light state licensing and the phasing out of the collective cooperative model, things will change as well as we probably will have to revisit many of these items if adult recreational use is passed. So we'll probably have to come back in November and revisit many of these items.
And if it isn't, I think it should be stuck in.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
And then come back to revisit it, take it out if, I mean, that's.
That's fine, I just know that sometimes. That's fine. I just know that sometimes an organization will have certain things in the ordinance, because it, you know, it is higher in the overall hierarchy than a policy, but sometimes they'll put, you know, policies in a policy document that's more quickly amendable, that could just be on an agenda and adopted with a resolution, but-
And we've done that for a lot. It's pretty much a supplement, supplemental document along with the ordinance.
So, I was just wondering what was the better course on that one, but, but I'm fine with it. If it's in the ordinance, we can always amend the ordinance. It just takes a little more time.
And this element will be sunsetting eventually, one year after Consumer Affairs posts on its webpage that licenses are available.
January 1, 2018.
Well, it won't, whenever state, whenever they post on their public webpage that licenses are now available for cannabis activities from the state, this clock starts running in 365 days after that. Prop 215, SB 420, all that basically just sunsets.
Sunsets.
Yeah. So, in that regard, this would need to come out whenever that 365 days runs. Item H, additional information request. I saw this in the current 9.31, and I realized that it's, I feel it's a really important element that is in there and is not in the current document. Basically, if, if we run into a situation during the application process where we need additional information, that's reasonable to, to make a judgment or assessment whether, you know, to move forward and eventually issue a permit, this would allow, this wording would allow for that.
I agree.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And last one is, I believe it's the last one. Board of Equalization sellers permit. We don't have that in the current draft ordinance. It would appear to be something that would be good to have in. It is in, obviously, the current 9.31.
Yeah.
Are, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's the entirety of what I have on this.
Any questions, or can we move on?
Let's move on.
Move on, all right. These are just some items from yesterday's meeting, just some issues that were brought off for potential discussion. We've already touched on the first one earlier today to include people. If an individual was obtained a permit during this current urgency ordinance, they could apply to have that same cultivation allowed with use permit in TPZ and forest land, and you guys approved that earlier, so we can just go straight to number two. So, currently in the ordinance, in 2017, only people that were cultivating prior to January 1, 2016 are eligible for a permit. So, essentially, you had to be here to get a permit in 2017. And that sunsets. So, starting in January 1, 2018, when the state opens its doors for applications, we too would open the door to outside people. I know at the board meeting, they brought up potentially moving that date. And if we have direction to look into potentially doing that, and whether we can legally do that.
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, as a mitigation, I don't know, I could see, I could see as a mitigation measure that we might get some state agencies and others commenting on this, pushing it out, or at least on certain types of zoning.
Well, there, there is no new, new permitting for TPZ and forest land, but-
But there's still other, other properties that are in-
It would pretty mu, if you, if you decide to change that, like, let's say you push out the date, it just, if anyone new comes, if anyone wasn't cultivating before January 1, 2016, they wouldn't be able to apply till whatever date you choose. Right now, it's January 1, 2018. So, if you are new to Mendocino, or you live in Mendocino and you decide you want to cultivate.
And that was brought up by Supervisor McCowen yesterday, and he wanted to see 2020, I believe.
And, and the reason why I think it's worth exploring is because, you know, I had a conversation with someone from one of the resource agencies, and I think they might be proposing, I mean, I'm anticipating we're going to get some comments about, along the lines of putting something in the mitigation measures to protect impacted watersheds. And, you know, I personally don't know offhand which of those watersheds in Mendocino County are the ones who are impacted. That's not my subject area, but-
And you could do that in a number of different ways. We briefly discussed, if you're interested in potentially protecting certain watersheds, you could do a study and, and just allot a certain amount of square footage per watershed, or the amount of square footage that, that watershed can support. That's another option, if you wanted to go down watershed protection, or doing some type of study around that specifically.
And where I'm coupling these two together is that that could take time, it seems to me.
Yes.
And so, that would be a reason to postpone the, the date, that new applications for new projects-
You could. And I would suggest that if you're interested in potentially moving that date out for non-Mendocino County, non-cultivating residents, I would suggest having county council look in, look into that and-
For my benefit, and I apologize, is the discussion now the idea that no new grows regardless if it's a Mendocino County resident or an outside resident would be eligible to do so until this future date? Is that, because, right, we were talking about this idea in the TPZ and the forest lands, so we're extending this countywide?
Well, because the watersheds that may be at sort of their limit may have all sorts of zoning.
Absolutely.
And so, it's not really limited to our artificial zoning that we've designated to the land. And, but, but it seems to me it could take some time to identify what are those watersheds that, that are at their limit, and which ones have more capacity, and where is that capacity? So, but I don't know how much time that would take. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
And, and I would like to suggest that maybe we put this on the side plate to get to the end of our meeting, because we are going to allow public comment at some point here. And I do believe the RCD did address that as well as California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I keep looking at Patricia, but I think we need to maybe just wait for that comment to come up.
Okay.
And let's go back to this before we adjourn, if we may. Thank you.
Number three is legal parcel. That was brought up at the last meeting. It's still our understanding that you'd like to move forward with the current legal parcel definition. There was talk about liking the one that's currently in the 9.31 urgency ordinance, but if you're still okay with moving forward with the legal parcel definition that's in here on the 19th, we can do that.
So, this is the most recent version that we, we-
Yeah, what you just, what she just approved is what's in here. On yesterday, Supervisor John McCowen mentioned potentially going back to that more restrictive version of legal parcel.
Well, I'm comfortable with what we have.
Okay.
I am as well.
Number four was also during that meeting. There was comments that to consider reducing the caregiver limit. So, right now, we mirror the state law, which says 100 square feet for a patient, and a caregiver has up to five patients in 100 square feet per patient.
And again, that was Supervisor McCowen-
McCowen recommended lowering five, the 500 square foot or five care, patients down to 200. So, then that would read 100 square foot for a patient and 200 square foot for a caregiver. What we currently have there is what the state has, so we're just mirroring the state.
And really, legally, we can be more restrictive than state law.
We can be more restrictive if we wish.
I don't have a strong opinion on it. I mean, I, I know his comment was, his question was whether or not someone would be the primary caregiver for more than two patients.
I would just say during the process of creating that state legislation, that topic was kind of a hot topic, especially with the medical community and patient advocate community to reach those numbers. So, in terms of, of the state law where that came from, there was a lot of advocacy to have that, to maintain 100 square foot and maintain five patients for a caregiver, so.
And I am aware that we may have someone in the public that does provide cannabis for medical patients and may be able to give us some advice. So, can we also put that? And we have to go back to it before we adjourn today.
And it, it would be simple to just mirror the state in that, just for consistency purposes. That's the reason why we have it in there the way it is, is for consistency. Then, the fifth item was on, the 12th was the potential to add in additional language, pretty much saying there, there should be no additional vegetation removal for cultivation sites. I don't know if there's any interest in discussing that or putting it in there. That was, has not been in any of, any versions of 9.31, to my understanding, of no vegetation removal, no additional vegetation removal.
There's a, in the zoning ordinance, one of the, in the findings under administrative permits and use permits. Yeah, about avoiding or reducing vegetation removal, but not a prescriptive standard. And that's what's being considered or suggested.
And I would just add that I think a complete prescriptive, you know, not allowing it would, would, realistically, I don't see how somebody's going to farm and, and try to meet that at the same time. And definition of vegetation, which I guess is out there, you know, is, is plant material vegetation, is, or grass, you know, annual grasses that grow on the ground.
Species, and it could go on and on.
Yes.
I've, I've tried to remember if that was something Fish and Wildlife brought up? No?
No.
Okay, why is it on here? That was something brought up by a county supervisor?
Yes.
Not present.
So, we just wanted to bring that item, as Commissioner Morris stated, that would be incredibly difficult and-
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you'd just like to move past that and just say, "Not right now," we can do that.
And the, and the only time I worry about vegetation removal is in riparian zones. But that, I believe, is covered by the 1600 permits. So, we're not really having to have oversight with that.
And I'll add to that, during the initial study process, when we conduct the SEQA review, this issue will come up. And to the extent it returns to you as a mitigation measure, it'll come back at a, I'll call it, scale that fits the problem to help it.
That, that would be good, okay.
And number six is along the same lines of having no site grading. That was brought up as a potential recommendation. And I would say that the same thing in terms of the SEQA-
Yes, absolutely.
Comment that Andy made is that those things will kind of be scaled if there needs to be mitigation measures during the environmental review process. So, those we can deal with in the future if they come up.
Right. And to, to correct a point I made yesterday with the full board, we do have a grading ordinance that engages ground disturbance activities, other than that might be associated with building a house, for instance. So, we do have a tool already. So, we would, in the SEQA process, be looking at it, how it might apply in a cultivation site situation.
And I think that's important. And I'm trying to think, it's been seven and a half, eight years since I've dealt with property owners and talking about what permits. But I think the water, North Coast Water Quality Control Board, depending on the size of the grading, requires some type of permit.
Well, under the stormwater program, areas within the county, the MS4 areas around Fort Bragg and the city of Ukiah are within that regional water quality control board requirement. And in fact, we have an ordinance that implements that. But it would be, it was suggested that maybe those type of controls be extended to cannabis cultivation sites outside of the MS4s. And, and I think in the SEQA process, we will be able to look to that type of tool potentially as a mitigation measure and apply it as necessary to deal with a potential impact.
Sure. And I was thinking there was something more that had to do with traditional agricultural grading, like putting in new vendors where you may be ripping the land and-
We would have to look at-
I believe they actually have, or at least in terms of vineyards, there's some other specific waivers from the North Coast, and I think they may deal with grading in terms of agriculture and, and things. I think you're correct.
I, because I know any native artifacts that you find, you immediately quit, call the authority, and they come in and look at the sites. So, it's, I know there's quite a bit of process. Right.
Is that a sign?
I know. Just quickly, before I move to, to public comment, just an overall, just comment about our two ordinances. I think you mentioned Supervisor Jurey yesterday that we're not trying to get everything perfect on the first go. And just a little bit along the lines of that, that we're really just working on putting together some type of foundation, some type of structure where we can do an, an initial study so that we can figure out what needs to be done. So, this by all means doesn't need to be perfect, and a lot of things can be revisited. And there's a lot of months ahead to continue to work on it.
Sure.
But just to get something, some type of structure done to start some environmental review.
And, and that's important. And of course, our professionals are tho, those that serve on the Planning Commission. And they, you know, their advice and, and recommendations is going to mean a lot as well.
That's it from us.
Okay, all righty. So, I, I do, I've had some special requests. And at the discretion of the chair, the first one is, at the last meeting, oh, we've got speaker cards here. But at the last meeting, we allowed, under local agency comment, we allowed organizations, environmental organizations to come up and speak. And we have one individual that is going to have to leave us real soon. So, I want to call the Willets Environmental Center and give Ellen Drell, just come, Ellen, and you can place your name into the record in order to give comment.
My name's Ellen Drell, and I am speaking on behalf of the Willets Environmental Center. And I want to thank you Supervisor Brown for letting me start, because I have to dash away. I'm somewhat new in this process, so I've learned a lot today, and I have more questions than comments. But I just want to, I don't have written comments to officially submit at this moment, but we, we will be doing so. So, I just want to go on record as, as wanting to be involved in this process. And we're very interested that any ordinance that comes forward is protective, sufficiently protective of the environment, because I think as it appears, everybody recognizes there is a potential here to really make strides forward in protecting the environment in a way better than we have been doing. And there's also the potential for things to spiral out of control and have certain environmental conditions get worse. So, so I think this, this ordinance is critical. I have two questions that came up while I was listening today. And one was, I believe, it was the ag commissioner who, who said that this current ordinance would allow those who are cultivating as of January 1 of 2016 to cultivate on TPZ land. But I'm wondering if that also includes forest land zoning? That's one question. And the answer is yes. Thank you. And the other question also raised by the ag commissioner was a reference to a hydrological, hydrological connection that that was going, any reference to a hydrological connection was going to be stricken from the ordinance. And I am wondering, you said it was, the wording was, I think, part of the North Coast Water Quality Control Board's comments. And I'd be interested in being directed to that, that comment. And I'd be interested in being directed to that comment. And also, I'd be interested in a little more discussion on your thoughts about it. But I realize that there may not be time for that right now, since I need to leave. But maybe we could take it up at a future.
Well, I think the Ag Commissioner can give a very quick response to that, and one that was discussed at our last meeting. So I think it can be very quick.
Okay, thank you.
So I can provide a copy of the letter. If you give me your contact information, I'll get you the full letter. And last Friday, we discussed it, and the issue at hand that we saw, or I perceive, is the hydrologically connected wording is, you're basically assumed connected and hydrologically connected, and you have to prove that you aren't, and the process or the proof at the end of the day is very difficult to ascertain.
And that's in the letter that you'll get to me, or that was in the discussion?
That is not. The point being is that that portion of the suggested changes were not included in what we were presenting last Friday for that reason.
I see, okay. Thank you very much.
And actually, Ellen, we will be back on this ordinance, Board of Supervisors, the draft ordinance on Tuesday. Not sure of the time, but everything that's being done will be posted probably Thursday afternoon. So available, I don't know what time posted, but available at least by Friday morning for you to review. But again, this is a very long process, and certainly, we're not at the end of it.
And comment letters that have already come in are currently available online.
Right, okay.
And we can help you find them.
Is the water quality?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So if anyone needs assistance, we can help them identify where it's located.
Okay, great.
Supervisor Brown, this will be heard in the afternoon on the 19th, after 1:30.
After 1:30, everybody hear that?
Is it the tax? Okay, all right.
We had, we would be doing the tax in the morning and then the ordinance in the afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. Welcome to my world.
It's 24/7.
Yeah. So anyway, I don't know if Ellen heard that, the tax ordinance is in the morning, tax measure, and the draft ordinance, cultivation ordinance, is in the afternoon. Yeah, come join us. So, all right. So I did that, because Ellen has to leave, and thank you very much for being here today and your comment. I'd like to move to the amnesty program and invite Planning and Building Directors, Steve Dennecliff, to please come forward and give us information.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Steve Dennecliff, Director of Planning and Building Services. So yesterday, during the board meeting, there was a discussion about the amnesty program. What I've done is put together a memo address to the CEO, Angelo, that's available in the back for the audience. And it's what I think that has been heard by staff over the past couple of months. So, starting in 2010, the board authorized an amnesty program that did not provide amnesty from building code requirements, which can't be waived. But the amnesty in this case meant it was relieved from investigative fees that are assessed and charged against unpermitted construction when it's legalized. Certainly, on multiple occasions in the past couple of months, the board, individual supervisors have talked about amnesty programs. It's something that has absolutely been heard by staff. It's something that is in sort of a gray area. And I think that as far as, you know, when it started or when it's intended to start, and I'd be very happy to take any direction or, I guess, suggestions that anyone has here. I'd like to differentiate, I think that a point of confusion yesterday was between the fee waiver program that has been offered for job-creating commercial projects and the amnesty program. So I know that your supervisors, your supervisors will understand this, but primarily for benefit of the public, you know, fees are, they're there to capture a portion of actual costs in providing a service. And as such, they're a fairly large part of the operational budget for the department. So there was a discussion of waiving fees for job-creating commercial projects. It would have opened up an operational hole in the department's budget. To ensure that that didn't harm the department, the board budgeted through Budget Unit 1810, funding to backfill, so that the department's budget remained whole. There was money to pay for staff time to process permits. The amnesty program, as it was released in 2010, and as is envisioned, you know, for 2016, is waiving investigative fees, which are tied, they're primarily intended to to help recoup a portion of the time spent in identifying violations, doing research on a case. And so if we've got a program where people are coming in and self-reporting, it minimizes the staff cost associated with that. So with a minimal staff cost, what we're doing is foregoing money that would otherwise go into the nuisance abatement fund for abating violations, and such as we'd done on Hanson Lane and the Fort Bragg area a month or so ago.
And Noyo Harbor.
And Noyo Harbor.
Down in Pointe.
We've done several of them. And so, you know, it won't harm the department's day-to-day operations to offer an amnesty program without funding specifically budgeted to backfill for the nuisance abatement fund. It will limit the opportunities that the county has potentially in the future to bait nuisances. And we'll be tracking the cost of the investigative fees waived, so that if the board wanted to at some point in the future, it could consider backfilling at that time. So with that distinction in place or in mind, the amnesty program is envisioned as being allowed for self-reported, previously undocumented violations on residential-related, so homes, guest cottages, pertinent structures, garages, shops. It wouldn't be allowed, it wasn't in 2010, and it wouldn't be allowed for commercial violations. And, you know, the other thing that I wanted to note is that, and this was experienced in 2010, and just to make sure that everybody's very clear about it, there are certain issues that won't be easily addressed with an amnesty program. These can, you know, if a structure has been built too close to a property line, that can't be permitted absent a variance, and it's possible that a variance couldn't, it's possible that a variance could not be approved. So, you know, there's going to be some thorny issues. There's going to be some construction that is built on roads that don't meet fire standards, and that CAL FIRE won't approve for, give 4290 clearance for. That'll probably be the exception, not the rule, but it's something that I want to make sure that everybody's clear, that it's a potential stumbling block. Also coastal development permits, when you get in the coastal zone, you know, there might be environmentally sensitive habitat areas or an extensive permitting process that would need to happen before a building permit could be processed. And, you know, with this background, there's a couple of things that I'd like to. So one, the department hasn't turned away anybody for amnesty. People have come in asking for specific information that we haven't necessarily had. But direction to staff has been, we accept anybody, any application from somebody looking for an amnesty, and that we would get the details ironed out before they were actually feed. A couple of outstanding questions that I think I know the answer to is, I believe that there's been discussion in the past as to whether amnesty would be offered only for people that are participating or trying to get, participate in the marijuana permitting program, or if it would be offered for everybody. I believe that I've heard consensus that it would be for everybody, but I think that that's been an outstanding question. You know, another sort of oddity here is that the board has been really working with the community to try to recreate a culture of compliance, is what it's been called, and with specific emphasis on collaborating with the Contractor State License Board. And so with amnesty being for property owners and investigative fees that would be assessed to them, you know, there's an outstanding question as to whether or not referrals would be made to the Contractor State License Board if work was not completed by the property owner. Again, I suspect the answer would be no in spirit with amnesty. But it's a fairly interesting conflict with board desires on two different matters that are tied pretty closely together. So with that being said, you know, the staff is ready to offer an amnesty program. We haven't turned anybody away at this point, but, you know, there's some minor lack of certainty as to when we're offering it and.
And I appreciate the report and the fact that Supervisor Brown brought this up at our last meeting. So I guess the question that I think you asked is, is there some specific action that the board needs to take to, you know, clarify the amnesty program starts today, and it ends on that day, and then we get the press release out and, you know?
And I'd like to go to the CEO on the.
I think that what we can do, I believe what I've heard Steve say, is that they're ready to go with a few minor tweaks, and I don't know that there's any additional clarification that's needed from the board. You bring up some interesting comments, and I think those will get back to the board if you say yes or no. But if you're talking about starting and then doing a press release, we can do that.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm looking for your advice, because it was raised yesterday by myself. And there was confusion among the board members as to whether it was going on or not, and just exactly what it encompassed. So I want, I think we should have something that comes before the board, because I hear some uncertainty in certain areas when we talk about the contractors. What's it called?
Contractor State License Board.
Yeah, State License Board and.
That is a big issue.
Yeah, and I think there should be discussion, because it's not going to be staff that's going to be in the hot seat. It's going to be the supervisors that oversee it, and I just think it's important that maybe there's a discussion.
Okay, so there's a couple of things. One is that we do have the memo, which now is a public document.
Okay.
So each supervisor could see that.
All right.
They have an update on what's occurring. Next week's schedule will not allow for one more item.
Okay.
So if we want to say to the planning director, wait, bring this on August 2nd, and then after August 2nd, go ahead and implement the program, we could do that.
Okay, well, I think it should be implemented. Here we have the memo, let us get started. But on August 2nd, I would like to have a report to my colleagues.
Okay, and that would be with some of the clarifications that Mr. Dennecliff just brought up?
Correct.
As far as, okay.
I think that when we discussed it way back when.
Right.
It was for all the public.
Right.
It was not just limited.
Right. I think that was my understanding too, so, okay.
So could we give some feedback maybe on, I don't know, my thought is that during the time in which the amnesty program's in place, that the county would not be reporting to the Contractors Association.
And that is, that is absolutely the clarification. I can tell you that I had a meeting at noon today where that was one of the issues about the ongoing reporting and how necessary that was.
But I think that's also another reason for someone to act on their own during the amnesty program, because once it ends, and there would be an end date to the amnesty program, then the county goes back to reporting to the contractors group.
And that would really benefit staff in the department if that was clear board direction, because I.
Okay, then, I guess we better wait till August 2nd and make sure we get clear board.
Because if I'm understanding you, you're saying, and this is my understanding of the program, that the amnesty program is for everyone, not just for one particular industry, is that right? There is a specific time on the amnesty program. And then we're saying during that period of time, we would not be doing any extra reporting to the state licensing board. So that would be really good to have board direction on that if Supervisor Jurey and Supervisor Brown, you wouldn't, that that would work for you. That would be really good.
Well, so I guess, I mean, that's just my, that's my opinion. I don't know, do you want to commit to that right now, or do you want to wait? Because if.
It would have to be the full board, because it was the full board who gave the initial direction and also got the report, really, on the state licensing board and reporting.
So it just strikes me, based on what you've said, that it seems to be there's really only the two points that you really would want feedback from the board, which is on that issue about the reporting and the length of time of the amnesty. And so I guess the question is, I know those agendas are packed, but would, is there any time on that Monday agenda?
Well, what we do have is, this is like, I feel like we're playing, you know, these games. But on that's on the agenda for next week, the public, we have three meetings scheduled for Monday and Tuesday, so it's really challenging. Steve, you're giving a PBS update, and that is on the agenda, and that is not on consent.
Tuesday morning, right.
So is it possible?
Not Tuesday morning. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is Tuesday morning, and that's actually first thing Tuesday morning.
I was going to say, there's another meeting.
That agenda item, I know, has been turned in, but in that update, do you have anything about the amnesty program? Do you want to include this in on the update, and then at that point, ask the board for any direction? Is that item, just direction to staff, or is it just a report?
You know, it's accepting the report, I think, but the alternative motion is provide direction to staff. And really, I think, I know what to do. I just need affirmation from the board. So I don't think that it's going to require a full discussion unless there's disagreement with what I think has been said.
So then that would clarify everything, so that would go on the 19th?
It's perfect.
Okay, all right, good.
All right.
Okay, geez, that was an effort. Thank you.
Yay. One step down the road. I would like to hear local agency comment. Patricia Hickey, you are on the lineup.
Patricia Hickey, I'm the Executive Director of the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District. And so just a couple issues, I was here last Friday and cemented comments. But I think that, looking at the bigger issue for us and many of our resource agency partners and the conservation community is, as you know, looking at now, but looking post 2018, right, in terms of the possibilities for expansion in the county. And there's two kind of fundamental issues that I would just like to talk about. You know, resource agencies don't think in terms of zoning. We think in terms of resources. And to really encourage the county to look at the county and see where you have the resources to support expansion of irrigated agriculture, given that we are water-limited, given that we have threatened and endangered species in our streams. And so something a little bit more sophisticated than just zoning districts. So there are other types of planning tools, like overlay zones, like maybe looking at, you know, zoning or allowing certain area or cultivatable area per watershed. I mean, 11 of our watersheds are impaired for flow and sediment already. And so they're supposed to have active TMDLs that occur, that really look at, you know, where is the water demand? Where's the sediment coming from, that they need to get into compliance over a period of time? You could maybe somehow tie expansion of cultivation in those areas to TMDLs. I don't know, it's a possibility. But, and then also, I mean, there is this concept of ag zones. So what, for future, and this is one of my big concerns, what in this process prevents people from moving here in the next two years, anticipating that they're going to be able to cultivate in rural residential 2 and 5, and come and start subdividing and putting in grows, and then the only disincentive is that they have to wait for two years to get a permit, right? I mean, maybe I'm seeing it wrong, but you could be encouraging additional illegal operations. I know that what Humboldt County did was say, any additional expansion of ag, I mean, of cannabis would be on prime ag soils. So they're just saying, right off the bat, going forward, you know, for new grows, it will be in ag zones on prime ag soils where, that are pretty much by definition already irrigated. So it's just a, you know, taking irrigation water from one crop to another, right? So it's kind of capping water demand for the industry, and that's just something to think about. Because I fear that the path you're going down now, the signal to the Bay Area or to wherever is, you can come to Mendocino County and you can basically, you know, grow in most places. I'm glad that it's limited on TPZ, but.
Well, I think that, yes, okay. But I think our environmental process may identify some of these concerns.
Sure, right.
And so I do feel it's really important, maybe for you to get in comment, to be considered in the SEQA process.
Sure, I think we're kind of jumping ahead, and I think we came quickly, Carrie, to just say, to. to just say, to caution you. And the reason that Scott Bauer came down is because there's been a lot of unanticipated impacts from their early adoption. And just to share that with you, that, you know, I mean, granted, we have, you know, a, a, a group of people who are farming here now that really want to be in compliance or staying or important part of the community, but that's a very small percentage of the population and you have to think about others too, so.
And, and I think from my count, there's about 14 watersheds in this county that we have 11 with TMDLs on them.
Right.
But I have my own opinion about TMDLs in some cases.
Sure, I know, it's just-
And, and the process that those designations were given. But bottom line is, we're also talking about not allowing anyone new until 2020, at least I'm, I'm hearing that.
Well, that's, you're not going to permit it, but what's going to prevent them from just coming and, and starting? Is there going to be a penalty that if you find that they came in and started cultivating between now and-
It depends what, everything comes out on Jan- January 1, 2018, right?
I think, you know, this strikes at a core issue of SEQA is, you know, when, when do we allow something that might be considered individually limited, but cumulatively considerable? And the point here is that we may unleash a second wave or tsunami green rush here. The, the 2018, 2020 limitation to allow existing grows to come into the program is probably an effective mechanism to get a, some handle on where cultivation is and providing a regulatory framework. What happens next after that, when it opens up to other grows is, is something that we need to carefully look at. And I think the point from my position is, is taken and is one that the board's going to have to grapple with as a policy issue. The, the idea of directing future grows to zoning districts expressly intended for agricultural activity is one, one strategy.
Well, that gets back to earlier discussion about during that intermediate time, saying that nothing would be considered, no new applications would be considered up until, let's say, 2020. That would give the county time to have this sort of resource map that would look at the whole county. And, I mean, to me, that seems like a perfect environmental mitigation project for the doc.
Yeah, I mean, timing or phasing is a type of mitigation and effectively that's what would occur with this 2018 or 2020 deadline or, or timeframe.
And I believe that under state law, unless it's been prohibited, like growing within or cultivating within some of our cities, tell me if I'm wrong, but bottom line is that a prohibition or a moratorium would very possibly be a good thing because Supervisor McCowen wants as many people to come in as possible to sign up now, get their permits, but a person legally still can grow so many plants if it's not prohibited, correct? If they have a medical-
The patient caregiver allowance.
Right.
Which is, it's considerably smaller, 100 square feet for a patient or five patients for a caregiver.
Okay. But I, you know, that's something we can't control.
Yeah, that, that's, it's the, it's the, it's a cumulative impact of thousands of parcels that can be subdivided and sold for, you know, for irrigated ag in upland watersheds where there's not, you know, that land can't support that level of, of agricultural use. It's just not intended to, you know? It's just, it's kind of scary. I mean, we really, you know, those of us who've been working on pictures restoration, it is terrifying. It will, there'll be an ecosystem collapse if, if that just goes, if that goes forward. You have to think about having the resources to support the industry.
Correct, yeah.
For everybody's benefit, for people's drinking water, for, for everybody, you know? You just don't want to deal with that.
And I want to thank you for speaking today and I think we're all hearing what you have to say and we've also just gone through a horrific drought.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we trust you, we really do thank you and want to work collaboratively and through the, the process, so.
Okay, sounds good. Alrighty, we've got a ton of speaker cards and is there anyone that has to leave right away? I'm, I'm going to keep everyone to three minutes with a couple of exceptions. They'll come at the last, but we've got quite a number here and this meeting's going to adjourn here real soon. So I've not seen anyone has to leave. John, would you like to come up?
Thank you Supervisor Brown. I've got three whippets and two horses waiting on me. John Sakowitz speaking as a private citizen only. Good afternoon Supervisors, good afternoon County Staff. Two comments and then two questions. First, I was very distressed Supervisor Brown to hear your opening comments that there was confrontation and argument in the hall yesterday. I was watching the web stream of yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting with an investor group in San Francisco. They're looking to put together the country's first real estate investment trust of cannabis properties. And the consultant that the county used an estimate of, I think it was $1,850 for a pound of sun-grown cannabis. And I believe that's what the argument was about in the hall. The pro forma is that this investment group in San Francisco is using for their model is something like $800 to $1,000 a pound. So I would just respectfully suggest to the board that, that this, this advisor, this consultant is overestimating the pound of, of outdoor cannabis by about 50 to 75%. So that's my first comment. Second comment is, as you know, commercial cannabis activity is still illegal. Both District Attorney Ister and Sheriff Follman have been very clear that they will investigate and prosecute and enforce the law. But I think at some point, we have to address that aspect of cannabis cultivation, particularly if we want to keep pace with other counties attracting just many tens of millions of dollars in outside investment, which I, I believe our county needs. My question through the board to county staff with the following. With regard to mitigation measures, is there a recommendation as to whether we're preferring an environment? This is new, the little button.
Yeah.
The little beep, brother. And I don't like it because I'm long-winded.
It works.
Yeah, it does work, doesn't it? Whether there is a preference for an environmental impact report over a, a mitigated negative declaration? So that's the first question with regard to mitigation measures. And with regard to SEQA, in a countywide voter-passed initiative, does that trump SEQA or is that with regard to statewide initiatives only? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we're looking into that as well.
I can quickly reply to that.
Okay.
So there's no preference to the EIR or mitigated neg deck. We'll allow the initial study process to make that determination. Mitigation measures are tools that can be used in either environmental documents to help reduce impacts and we'll be as strategic as we can with those. With regard to the initiative process, that might be a part of the, you know, the heritage initiative. County Council probably would nod to say that, that does, if adopted, allow land use regulations or rules like this to be implemented without SEQA.
And that is backed by a court case and a legal decision, but I also think that it's important that we also look into the fact, because this is going around, that the Board of Supervisors is going to, if it qualifies with all the signatures, is going to be asked to adopt it outright. And I think there would be a difference there about SEQA.
County Council.
Yes, County Council.
So you're saying to, we're being at, the board is being asked to adopt outright the heritage initiative, is that correct?
I believe they're going to be asked when the signatures qualify.
Okay, and so the signatures have already qualified. It's going to be coming before the board. They could have done that if there wasn't a tax component.
I see.
But because of the tax component, that won't, will not be an issue before this board. The board cannot, cannot put forward a tax initiative without that going before the people.
Okay, I really appreciate that update and it's going to be what it's going to be. Okay. Alrighty. Any other comments? Tracy Peller. Did I say your last name correct?
You did.
Okay, and Tracy is going to be followed by Corinne.
Hi guys, I'm Tracy Peller. I'm from Leightonville. I'm founder of the Mendocino Wildlife Association. So I'm here for habitat and I'm here for cannabis, which puts me in this special place here with you. I really appreciate the work that Patricia Hickey did. I love the cannabis best management practices. I think it should be our bible of how to grow. And I love our heritage initiative. So that's why I'm here. I'm saying, let's go heritage initiative. I think it takes a lot of the work out of it. I didn't know about the taxes until just this minute. I wish there was a way to get around that. Is there? Do you think? Maybe? Anyway.
If you vote in November, maybe.
All right. I have so, I've, I've talked to you guys so many times in my mind and here I am with so much to tell you, but I appreciate so much of what you've done. I, I look up here, I couldn't be more proud to live in a county that really supports watershed and wildlife, number one. And small farmers, we're here to protect Mendocino. That's why we're here, keep corporation out. So again, heritage initiative, but now that I've, see, we can't really adopt that right now. I was going to say, do it right now, guys. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Corinne, and she'll be followed by Johanna Mortz.
Hi, Corinne Powell from Ukiah. I have quite a few problems trying to integrate all of the documents that we have received and changed and then rewritten and then deleted and I'm getting pretty confused. I'm hoping before the meeting on the 19th, we can have one document. Do you think that's possible? That would be the permanent ordinance draft?
There will still be a couple of areas that need to be covered at the meeting, but it'll be pretty much finalized and I believe there'll be a question sheet. After you finish speaking, we'll address that.
Okay. I have some questions that I don't think were completely covered and if you don't mind, please indulge me to ask staff and yourselves as well.
Well, just go over those very quickly.
Okay. What happened to the legal dwelling unit? It seemed to be deleted in many places as was the 100 feet from any legal dwelling unit where one could have a garden. What happened to those things?
So let's go forward with all your questions.
Okay. Because I recall, and I couldn't quote it to you, but I believe that the urgency ordinance will be replaced immediately if a permanent ordinance is approved. Is that correct?
Okay, let's go forward with all your questions.
I believe that vegetation removal, as it was brought up, is required to be mitigated by the Water Quality Control Board and revegetation is required. I think that should be kind of a non-item. I remember that staff had said he would check into the documents from the water board regarding slope of cultivation areas. The water board, and I have excerpts for you right here, does state 35%. The documents for the county are still 15%. If 15% is withheld into the new ordinance, that will automatically disallow legal cultivation on many hundreds and hundreds of farms, which are functional, they're not contributing to water discharge issues, but this is a slopy county and I think that we should be as generous in that regard as possible. Have a few more, but I've been dinged out.
No, you still are yellow. Keep going forward.
Okay, great. There's also, because the water board is a huge factor in what we're doing here and many people have already adjusted. Once the water board order came out, the county is putting more restrictions on, requiring more adjustment. I would ask for an extent, an extension-
Finish your sentence.
-of at least 180 days as the water board is allowing for people to become compliant so that if indeed we have a permanent ordinance that is not in agreement with the urgency ordinance, which has already been implemented by those of us trying to comply, that we have an opportunity to readjust again. So I'm asking, when you talk about amnesty, I know it's one issue, I'm talking about an extension of time for people to comply. Thank you.
Can we answer any of those questions very quickly?
The, the legal dwelling is in, it's in the various permit types.
Right.
So that, that has not gone away. The other elements related to the water quality, North Coast Water Quality Board we can look into.
The 100-foot setback from the dwelling unit continues to apply and we, we talked about that in the exhibits earlier.
That's what I thought.
And then on the issue of whether or not, if there's a change in county policy of giving 180 days to comply?
I think we need to look at how that works mechanically.
Okay.
So that'll be outstanding. Johanna, and you're going to be followed by Ron Edwards.
Good afternoon Supervisors. My name's Johanna Mortz. I'm from Willets. I would like to talk about the setbacks again. I would like to point out that the maps that were given today of usable land were pretty inaccurate in representing usable land. It does not take into consideration the topography of our land here and what is actually usable on somebody's parcel. It does also take into consideration the 100-foot setback from your legal dwelling on your house. It does not take into consideration the setbacks set forth by the water board for streams and wetlands. I would at least like to suggest removing a setback from your own dwelling. A lot of us have placed our gardens by our own dwellings to avoid environmental degradation. We've tried to place our gardens in places that were very environmentally friendly and most of that is next to our house. I would also like to say that I myself have a farm that is zoned RR5. I have enrolled in the water board program as a tier two star and I'm working to develop our resource protection program. I've also applied to the emergency ordinance program and have in fact been inspected by the sheriff and was passed and we were qualified to get our 50 zip ties. As it stands currently with the setbacks, we will no longer be a compliant farm and we are working very hard to be a compliant farm. We are trying to abide by all of the things and I would like the setbacks to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of staff on that? So the chart that we were given, as if, my interpretation of it is these were setbacks from the neighboring property's houses, not from the property owner's own house. Is that true?
And that's how the rule works. It's from the neighboring properties under separate ownership, not the house located on this owner's property.
Okay.
You just mentioned that though. She just asked that question and you said it was a 100-foot setback from your own.
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's from your neighbor's home that the setback-
So there's no setback from your own.
You're, you're getting, you're getting an agreement from staff, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, Ron, go for it.
Yeah, Ron Edward CK Nursery, Willets. One of the things I'm dwelling on is the nursery aspect. It's kind of a specialized area. Currently, I'm on a TPZ, have been doing the nursery for a number of years. I have the resale license and so forth and I'm on TPZ. So there's really no clarification. Will the nursery be able to continue at that location is another one? Will that be grandfathered in? The other issue is that Mendocino is generally an outdoor- The other issue is that Mendocino is generally an outdoor cultivation area, unlike Sonoma County, the Bay Area, where it's more indoor. So as a nursery, it's very important to produce seed stock because the sales of clone is not a year-round issue here. And number of people working at a number of festivals, that can add anywhere between $15,000 to $45,000 worth additional income in sales through those to help support the nursery. And in the current organization ordinance, the way that it's written is that it does not allow flowering. And I think that there's like, I kind of understand that you don't want diversion of it. So I'm suggesting that possibly a 100 to 200 square foot area be allowed in the nursery area to have flowering plants with a height limit of maybe six feet, limiting the size of the container. And generally, when you are doing seed production, those those plants and branches are well identified to revert that diversion. So if that's something that could be considered in making the nursery viable, because it really is a wholesale business. There are really no retail cannabis nurseries because we prefer to work with dispensaries and work directly with growers in that situation. We do not want people coming to our nurseries. It's a real security issue that's just not practical. It's not at this time anyway, maybe in 2020, it might be a retail situation. But if you would consider that, those in the ordinance.
Thank you.
So thank you, yes, Ron sent a message to the ag department in general. I didn't have time to get back to him today. But generally speaking, the seed production is allowed for in the current iteration, current draft. There will be a separate seed producing program, if you will, inside the nursery element that will, to the extent possible, account for the flowering plant material that has to occur for seed production. We recognize seed production as important and an important part of the industry. So that will be worked in. It's not too apparent from the current draft, but that's what we're looking at.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ron, you got that?
Yeah, yeah, zoning.
Or whether or not you're grandfathered in is the question.
Currently, it is proposed not to be included as an allowed use. And the grandfathering or legal nonconforming status of marijuana cultivation has not been discussed or determined at this point, how that would be handled.
Did you hear that, Ron?
Yeah.
So the question, so the question is, so we we have grand in the draft ordinance, we've grandfathered in cultivation, but not nurseries? Is that it?
I'm checking right now, excuse me.
That's correct. And with a use permit, if you're in TPZ, we'll allow you to get what you were permitted. So 99 plants would be fit into the 10,000 square foot category. Our nursery category is 22,000 square feet.
And currently, as written, that type four permit under M2C3P is not listed.
And if you were going to consider grandfathering in, you would probably you would probably need to put a cap on that specific thing. So that if if you decided you wanted to grandfather a nursery into a TPZ, that it won't exceed 10,000 square feet.
Well, so the grandfathering term that I'm how I'm using it would be our we have a mechanism in our zoning code, the legal nonconforming use determination, where if you establish a use in accordance with the rules that applied at the time, you may continue or it's grandfathered in at that the size that that it was legally established. So the the notion of capping a grandfathered use doesn't really apply. But we need to look at whether that particular use is is permissible. If if it was, if it was put into place under the 9.31 program or 215 or whatever thresholds we established, it may be recognized. But right now, it's I think it's an omission in our zoning code proposed. We don't have the class four permit listed. So we show it as being allowed with a use permit in the RR10 AG upland residential resource lands with a zoning clearance in the industrial zoning districts, but not listed in the TPZ.
Since I'm not really aware of the discussions of the ad hoc committee, I'd I'd feel more comfortable we brought this back to the whole board.
Okay.
I agree. Okay, does it work? Susan Schindler, please come forward. And Susan will be followed by Justin. Did I pronounce it correctly?
You did indeed.
I must know you.
First of all, I've seen some changes today that I did not realize were going to occur and I laud the county and agencies for doing those. The idea of reducing 200-foot setbacks to 100 feet, huge, thank you. And that legal parcels that are under one ownership and contiguous are no longer, I believe, being described as a legal parcel, huge, thank you. But when I look around my neighborhood in Potter Valley, the reality is nine out of 10 of my neighbors will be not able to be compliant. Period. I was asked to walk on an eight acre parcel by a friend, a neighbor, to see where he could move his 25 plant grow. And between the creek, the river, the setbacks, the road, now not the house, thank goodness. I had to say to him, I don't see any place on your eight acres where you're going to be able to continue to grow. Carrie, you know that probably most of the parcels in Potter Valley are less than two acres where people are growing. They're going to be gone. We are going to have no Hopper's Corner grocery store. We're going to have no soil amendment places. Probably the only thing that will survive will be Hopper's Corner Bar because when times are bad, that's where everybody goes. Okay? And the only thing that's going to increase won't be the economy, but the DUIs. I don't have specifics. I think we need to reduce the number of permits that are subject to sequa. I think it's a little bit of an overkill. And it's also going to time-wise make very difficult scheduling for a gardener, for a farmer. I think we need to consider grandfathering in some parcels on less than two acres. And I know you hate that, Andy. But the justification for keeping these people off, that it's going to affect residential, does not make sense to me because in order to have a permit on any parcel, we now have to have a house. So how is that affecting the residential zoning priorities and goals? Last but not least, I personally am angry when I see that we can't be on ag or rangeland because we are not being considered the highest and best use and that we should not be allowed to have prime agricultural land. I would like you to ask the mother of a child with epilepsy or a man on chemotherapy, if he thinks grapes are the highest and best use for that land or if he would rather see us growing cannabis. I feel like a second-class citizen when I read something like that. We are agriculture and we need to be considered agriculture and not unavailable and not have best land unavailable to us. Thank you.
And Ashley, Susan, no, I do not visit where I know there's active grows. And one, a number of years ago with 9.31, I had a sheriff's escort. And that was the only way I would do it.
I understand that. And I think there was.
When the property owner wanted me to go look. But I'm very careful about that because I am a county supervisor and I feel very strongly about it.
But we will be a ghost town, Carrie.
Well, I am, I just don't know what the parcels are there and we're going to give staff a chance to try to respond. But what I want to do is get through this public comment.
Absolutely.
So everybody has the opportunity before we adjourn.
And I appreciate the time.
Okay, thanks.
Hello, Justin Calvino, the Heritage Initiative and the founder of the Mendocino Appalachians Project. I'm going to start this just tiniest little bit of frustration. I'm going to bend for just a second. This is as a key stakeholder in the community, three minutes with the amount. My book fills up during these meetings, it's ridiculous. We we need to pass the Heritage Initiative for the point of just getting a commission where stakeholders get to come to the table and we all get to discuss this, where our hearts aren't racing and we're not jumping into a mic. And I just, that's that's my frustration, but it's okay. Heritage Initiative puts in a residency requirement that would answer some of these things, like 51%. So these green rush people that are coming into the county that you think are just going to come in and start buying up land would have to be actual 51% owners of the property and have been there for at least two years. So that that comes into play. As far as TPZ zoning, I think we're building prime soils. We need to raise the standard of our agricultural practices in forest land. That's that's the thing. If we are going to sell land on forest land or we're going to sell land at TPZ, then we're going to need to raise the standard. If we can, if we continue to restrict, all we're going to do is build a black market. So we need to tell the real estate agents to stop selling that land because people are going to want to buy it. And what are they going to want to do with it? They're going to want to farm. And that's that's what's going to happen because it's going to be available land. And as property values go up in Mendocino County, because the Appalachians Project or whatever whatever community draw that cannabis is going to have, land will be available. It will be for sale and we need to, we need to work with environmental agencies to to raise the standards of cannabis cultivation, not restrict it. And I think that that's going to go a long ways in doing that. As far as the caregiver limits, I believe it needs to limit to mirror the state because, you know, if we restrict zoning.
You're going to get two extra minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, so as caregiver limits need to be raised or at least mirror the state at the 500 square feet. I know that my mother-in-law lives in an area that she has been asked to cut her cannabis plants many times in the city of Willets. So she asked me to cultivate cannabis for her. I know that there are other people that are in similar situations within municipal municipalities that have either banned or restricted cannabis. So restricting that down to, I believe that using the word no native vegetation removal makes more sense because, I mean, I want to get rid of my Scotch broom. I want to get rid of all of the stuff that, you know, that's invasive. So so I think using the word native would be good, no native vegetation removal. And then as far as grading goes, we need to be able to swell. We need to be able to create bioswells, proper road grading. We need to be able to recharge our aquifers. The the old adage that we need to slow it, you know, spread it and sink it. And that's how that's how we recharge our aquifers and create water for the future. So there you go. Thank you for the extra two minutes.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Hannah, oh, there you are.
It's going to take me a minute to get my papers out here. Okay, thank you very, very much for all of your hard work, everybody. I think it's really spectacular. I I do want to address some specific things. The analogy of the buffer, and this is addressing the setbacks, which I know have been reduced, but not, I feel sufficiently, or I'm going to say two parallel things. I encourage looking back to the current setbacks, which are 50 and 100 feet rather than 50 and 100 and 100 feet. But at any rate, the the analogy of using the ag buffer is is just inappropriate because that's for new development and not putting a home next to agriculture because the agriculture uses may negatively affect the development. So I just think that using that analogy is not proper. And I actually went to the planning department and spent some time looking at some of these setback issues and no, there are no other setback of of that magnitude. In fact, you know, even for corridor preservation setbacks, the maximum is 60 feet. But there are only 25 feet for local roads, for example. And I went through each kind of setback and there's just not that kind of extensive setback. So while I so much appreciate looking at the reducing it to 100 feet, I think that further work needs to be done, especially given the issues regarding topography. And also, I think the issue of how a reduction of setback and looking at other administrative processes that could adequately address it is imperative because of the timeframe that it would take to go through the use permit process that's being recommended. I think it effectively negates the reduction if you have a six-month period of time that you have to go through before you could even get that reduction. Additionally, wording was added with the setbacks. It says not just the the property line, but it says or access easement. And again, I went to the planning department, I looked at different ordinances for other setbacks. And there is, I think it's in the corridor preservation setbacks ordinance that does say that easements, an easement or a road could be the the point at which you determine that line, but only if more than four parcels are served by that easement or road. So I'm wondering if maybe some of the equivalent standards can be applied here. And there was a, an adage of upon application with the definition of legal parcel when you're talking about the certificate of compliance. And I'm just wondering, does that really mean that people actually have to apply for the certificate of compliance? If so, that's yet another added burden and more time that it's one thing to have to be to those standards, but then if you actually have to go and have the landowner apply for the certificate of compliance, that's a different issue. So I'm just wanting clarification on that. The power usage, I I thought that we at the, I'm getting confused which meeting. It was.
Me too.
Yeah. It was, there were two suggestions. One was looking at not having a specific power usage limit, but really looking at important safeguards and mitigation effects. The sound, the safety, all of that. And I thought that that was what had been recommended, but I may have misunderstood that. But I just wanted to raise that because I fully support all of the very stringent requirements with respect to power usage and the mitigation effects. But I'm I'm not sure that having this cap by itself without those mitigation requirements would help. Again, the full use permit issue, not just for some of these individual areas like the setbacks or whatever, but also just the zoning and what is allowed with a full use permit or not. I think that we could wind up with a situation where we'll have a two- or three-year gap. And this comes into play also if some of the, I'm sorry, do you want to interrupt me?
Well, you've gone, you've used your five minutes, so why don't we wrap it up?
Okay. If we are not going to, if we are going to require people have all other state agency permits in in hand, we're going to have a two- or three-year or maybe five-year gap before people could actually get a license to cultivate. And so I think that we need to address some form of provisional permits which have safeguards, whether it's with added inspections or added other requirements. We really need to do that. I have a bunch more comments, but I'll put them in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey O'Neil. Discretion of the chair, I'll give you a couple more minutes. But.
Thank you.
We're going to be adjourning here and we won't be able to respond back to other speakers.
I'll blast through it.
Apologize to Casey and Supervisor Brown, I need to step off for just a second. Go grab my key, I'll be back.
Absolutely, sir.
Casey O'Neil, local farmer, representative for California Growers Association. I really want to echo what Susan Schindler said. I know a tremendous number of people who are on very small parcels who are currently cultivating a legal 25-plant garden, who would very much like to be part of the regulated system. To me, it's an economic justice issue. We are running the risk of allowing people who have lots of land and have money to continue to participate and telling the small, poor people. to participate and telling the small, poor people that they're out. And it's absolutely heartbreaking to me. And to have to have these conversations with my friends, my neighbors, people in my community and say, and they say, "What do I do? How do I get legal?" And to say, "Well, under the current thing, there's no place for you," is, is absolutely heartbreaking. So, you know, I really would love to see us remove the two-acre minimum. I think it's, I think it's of utmost importance. I think that we could look at some form of a zoning overlay. There are communities in this county that are cultivating communities where there is, that's what's going on, is there's, it's cultivation. And so to say to these people, "There's no place in the regulated system for you," I think is just, is wrong. Again, I would caution the use of the use permits. You know, I look at it and say to myself, if I would, to go from 25 to 50 plants, it's going to take me nine months, which means that I either can't cultivate that year or I have to figure something out. And, and it's going to force a lot of people to make a hard decision in which they say, "Well, I'm just going to do it illegally." And, you know, I think in, in a lot of this, this dialogue, we're really running the risk of, of forcing people to stay underground. And, and for me, I'm also an environmentalist. And what I've seen in the community is a lack of ability to have discussion about appropriate practice through a regulated system. And I think that every farm that we slam the door on is a farm that is going to be much less likely to engage in environmental compliance, that we're not going to have a water permit for, that we're not going to know where the water is going. And so I think it's very important that we bring as many people as possible in to the, the regulated system. I'd like to touch on the multiple cultivation sites. You know, there's been talk at different times that the current planning ordinance suggests that there's only one cultivation site per parcel. I have a cultivation site, my father has a cultivation site. We're under one permit, but we're on separate sites on the same parcel. Also, you know, the idea that you could have separate licenses so long as they do not exceed the cumulative total of 10,000 square feet. Slopes, I'm on a sloped parcel. I've done extensive mitigations. The Water Board has been out. I do have my Water Board permit. I've made sure to, I don't have any runoff, I don't have erosion. So there, there should be an allowance for, you know, if you can get your Water Board permit and they're comfortable with it, the county should be comfortable with it, I think. The medical exemption, I'd like to see it make sure that it's not contiguous, that it's 100 square feet, but that it's measured by canopy. So I could, for instance, have six plants that measure five feet across. That would add up to approximately 96 square feet. Am I out? Two minutes?
No, keep going, please. You have about one and a half minutes.
Great. So, you know, that I could spread those plants out and not have to grow them in one 10-by-10 area, I think would be very important in terms of a qualitative medicinal production. The start date for new cultivators, I'd love to see it be 2020. I think we've got thousands of people here in the county who need help to make the transition. And I think there's a lot of big money. I've been approached by big money from outside the county that wants in. And I think that as soon as we start letting that money in, we're going to, you know, it's, the scale is going to shift really quickly away from local cultivators. I got confused for a second. We covered the parcel definition, thank you. The setbacks, I appreciate the, the change down to 100 feet. I would also like to consider the possibility of either moving it back to 50 and 100 or a provisional license. You know, it's like if I have a cultivation site that's been in operation with no complaints from my neighbors and I want to expand it slightly, I ought to be able to do that without a full use permit or be able to do it with a note from my neighbor or some sort of just making it more workable so that it's not just automatically, you have to do the full use permit thing. I'm really excited about the amnesty. It's, it's a personal thing for me. I've got some permitting issues to take care of and I'm looking forward to doing that. I picked up my plans from Staples today. And the coastal zone, I've got a lot of people in coastal zones, you know, that, that are really wondering, when, when does our process start? How do we get some of this future regulated system? And, and so the, the TPZ question, the program got shut down so abruptly that I think we need like some sort of a compliance window, some sort of an opportunity for people to say, "Hey, since we're going to grandfather in TPZ, you got a couple of weeks to get your permit in for next year so that you can do it." Because otherwise, we sort of have this arbitrary thing in which people who jumped on it right away are in and people who didn't are out. And it's kind of a fairness and equity thing. And again, I think, you know, this cultivation is already in existence. And so if we say, "No permit for you," we leave people in a really terrible, terrible position. And thank you very much for, it's a tremendous amount of work. This whole process has been a lot, and so thank you.
Thank you. Chuck's not back yet, but do you want to respond to some of the questions?
Quickly going back to Ms. Schindler, the, the idea of highest and best use argument was not applied to prime land, agricultural land. It was really applied to our prime residential land, our smaller lots where the general plan is focused on residential development. Actually, we are looking to help to encourage grows in agricultural areas. With regard to taking the measurements of the setback from access easements that is done now, that's how we measure easements or setbacks for subdivisions or development of lots. And it's, it's lots that are easements that could serve potentially for lots or more. So we look at the area that would take access and there may be a large lot that could be subdivided. So we would, we would make sure that there's enough area for future development to take access and not be approached upon. And then that's really a quick hit there. There's lots more, but Mr., Mr. Ag Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chuck Morse is here with us, so.
And the question is, I'm sorry?
Well, I mean, the last speaker, Casey O'Neil, raised, I mean, 12 questions. So I don't have all memories actually at this point, but there, there were a couple of them that struck me as worth going into more and maybe this, maybe isn't the exact right time to go into it, but there were a few questions I would like to have more.
Okay.
You know, I can, I can, if you wish, I could talk about the concept of the smaller lots and an overlay.
Yes, would you?
Yes. So that was raised by, at the general board, the full board meeting yesterday, and that is a concept that we explored a bit about innovation zones and more of an urban-type industrial settings. But the idea that maybe it could be applied to clusters of small residential lots in areas of the county.
Like the one brought up in Leightonville and just brought up today in Potter Valley, which would be, I believe, over the hill.
So...
Both sides.
That, that would be the board engaged in, with the community to identify where it would be placed appropriately, but that overlay would, would provide some mechanism to maybe reduce the standards, the lot sizes, the setbacks or so forth in those particular areas that have attributes that support it.
The question I have is, does the ordinance need to have some provision for the allowance of that? Because I realize that that would have a later, that'd be a later process to have public meetings about applying the overlay to different areas. But does the ordinance need to have a provision so that you can even have that discussion?
I don't think so. I think the overlay can come separately and, and distinguish itself from this new chapter as it's adopted. And then say, notwithstanding whatever's otherwise required for lots less than two acres, these following provisions would apply, subject to the boards applying this designation on the areas.
But then it sounds to me like that this overlay, though, would then require an amendment to the ordinance or some other ordinance that would be co-equal with this one?
That's correct. And I would envision it would be a standalone chapter like our floodplain overlay, like our airport overlay. It would be a very specific set of regulations that, it would be a tool the board can use where they've identified communities that...
So I guess the question, both to you and maybe to Matt, is what would be the benefit or negatives of having the, this overlay provision in this draft ordinance that goes for environmental review and comment rather, because it seems to me there's an advantage of putting it...
Should we include it now?
Now, even though we're not activating it until some later point when we have those later discussions on those...
For existing, smaller than two acre.
I could, I could see that we could have, it wouldn't be necessarily an overlay ordinance, but it could be crafted as a, an exception built into this chapter where the board would designate parcels that are contiguous where these reduced standards might apply.
Well, the reason why I'm saying overlay, though, is because I kind of visualize that as like it's on a map. You can pick up the map and there it is. And the reason why I'm saying that is because we've also had, going back to an earlier discussion about this issue of some watersheds or micro portions of watersheds may be heavily impacted and are at their limit, and others may have more capacity. And again, we're kind of also talking about this may be applying to people who are already in operation, so they're, they're part of the background capacity. So I'm just saying I sort of visualize it as a visual thing. That's why I'm thinking of it as an overlay. And rather than, rather than a provision that's in text and then is like, well, I, that applies to me and like, well, why does it apply to you?
And this would be a mapped designation. It could be a mapped designation. A good example is how we map in the town of Mendocino, our visitor-serving facilities parcels. They are asterisk lots. Well, I could envision many contiguous asterisk lots that the board would, on a case-by-case basis, make a determination, this area applies, and we would apply that designation. So there, this is a tool we can explore and I'll, I'll look to see if it's a classic overlay standalone ordinance that might be the best way to do it. And it should go forward with this regulation to be evaluated at the same time.
And I realize it's going to take some time to do that, so I would think that maybe an update to the board on, because it was John McCowen that brought in the overlay, based on, I think, a neighborhood in Leightonville.
Yes.
And just to have a report, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the ordinance because there just isn't time from the time we have to do a posting.
Yep.
We also have a regular scheduled General Government Committee meeting for August 8th and a regular board meeting on August 12th.
So, so I understand, I understand the issue about the writing of, I understand your, the issue about writing the ordinance, but I'm also just saying, we do have an opportunity here to have a comprehensive environmental review process. And it just seems, to the extent that we could put this into that review process, it seems advantageous rather than having yet another...
And that's very wise.
So, and I want to hear what Sarah thinks we ought to do with the timing, because you, we're making a point.
It's, it's totally up to you guys. If you want to look at this, we, we are not going to have time to be able to present on the, on the 19th. We are publishing tomorrow. So there's no time to get a full report and presentation for the 19th. If you guys want to consider it for, in the ordinance, that's completely fine. Just realize that those decisions will delay the, the timeline. So we have to, we have to have some type of structure to move forward on an environmental study. Our current plan is to move forward on that, have something approved by the board this month to really start that process in August. That way we can get a document out for public review at the end of September, which it has to be noticed for 35 days. And then we have to respond to comments, I believe. So that's additional time, then ask for the Planning Commission. So we're more than willing to bring that back. I just want you guys to realize that if, that if, we're going to bring that back on the 12th of the 8th, we will be delayed by two to three weeks.
And I want the public to realize that, because we also have a lot of pressure on us to get this done and in place. Because right now, well, according to a lot of people that testified, they'd like to see something ready to go before the next growing season, so to speak, okay? That's what they said. Now, you can throw your arms up in the air, and I'm getting impatient because I've sat here for so darn long, but that's what I hear from a lot of others. I also hear from the general public, they want no new coming into this county. They don't want anything under two acres in neighborhoods. And we have all our max, the municipal advisories from throughout the county, they're going to be weighing in on this as well. We just got to get through this process. And any lawsuit, like occurred, where our hands are tied, we're not a rich county that can go to court and pay a million dollars in court fees and lawyer fees and everything else, we should happen to lose a case. We've just got to get going on this. And I think further delays are not acceptable. What do you think?
So I hear you. And I do, I do think of this as the 2017 ordinance, not the permanent ordinance. And I have a feeling that there will be amendments to the ordinance many, many times. And so maybe this is just one of those things where we say, "We're open to looking at this, at, at the next go-around of amendments to the ordinance."
But I do feel bad if somebody is in a situation, but on the other hand, I think they can still continue.
And, I mean, we can bring back options on the 2nd and 8th, and we try to weave that into this whole process and, and just so you guys have information to consider in the future, we're just not going to be able to do it on the 19th.
No, and I totally understand. Because to have it half-baked and go out with it, that kills our process and causes a legal liability. Okay, there were a couple more about slopes.
Yeah, so there, the way it's written now, slope is a factor. It's not an absolute limitation, but rather a trigger for further review. So to the extent possible, the way it's written in the ordinance, to the extent possible, we are looking at environmentally superior sites, or that there's no more environmentally superior site, and we're striving to avoid where we can steep slopes. And 15%, I think, was thrown out there. It is a SEQUET threshold that's commonly identified as something greater than 15% warrants closer review. We know, or I learned today, that Regional Water Quality Control Board prohibits grading or activities above 35%. So that's a substantial difference in, in range in which we could see cultivation activities take place. But again, if we have a discretionary review process, we're able to make sure that there are conditions in place that will help to assure something grown on between 15 and 35% can be managed in a way that doesn't create a water quality impact or an adverse effect. So slopes will be considered and, and we'll probably fine-tune how this regulation works in the initial study process.
So I guess just the question on that is, if the Water Board has their own inspector and they're presumably in charge of the water issue, and they're saying they were okay with, and it was a slope of in excess of 15 but less than 35, to, to what extent is the county going to really look at that differently?
Well, we would, first off, we would engage the Regional Water Quality Control Board in any permit that we're processing on the project. And they typically will comment and, and have their requirements in place. And part of our approval will say, "Prior to commencing your use, you need to fulfill the requirements of the Regional Water Quality Control Board," which might include specific construction standards, soil, erosion mitigation measures, the things that we see with construction site controls here elsewhere in the county. So I think there are remedies. It's just there as a trigger to make us aware of a potential issue. And to the extent we can, if a site has an opportunity that has a more superior site, we can guide people in that direction. And that becomes a kind of a good site planning, resource protection exercise.
And like the Mendocino Town Plan, there's a coastal process we have to go through and it needs to be explained again for whomever asked the question.
So the approach that we're recommending, as we've done with the wireless ordinance, which the board heard yesterday, the, we first adopted the right set of regulations as we're proposing now for the inland zoning code, which includes all the area in the county outside the coastal zone, that one-mile strip along the coastline. That allows us to develop a regulatory framework, refine it, take it through the SEQUET process, establish a method that will work for our county, and then bring it to the coastal, and then bring it, a proposal, take that ordinance and, and bring it forward to the coastal zone and, and in, and submit it. It's a separate amendment and a separate ordinance which requires coastal commission certification. That certification process adds quite a bit of time. So rather than start with an ordinance that includes coastal zone and inland and potentially be slowed down by coastal commission certification, we are going forward with the inland ordinance first. If we... If we get this ordinance adopted, or to a point where we know we've got a good concept or regulatory scheme, then we would look to the board's direction as to whether do we initiate a process to develop an amendment to our coastal zone ordinance that we could bring forward. So the two-step process...
Sure. Now, has there been anything brought up at the Coastal Commission? Are they gonna be like Department of Conservation, which is under California Department of Food and Agriculture, basically for a policy position, like with Williamson Act, et cetera? Has there been any conversation, and if you're not aware of it, maybe we should ask?
And we've started conversation with Coastal Commission staff about cannabis as an agricultural product or commodity. Is it something which they would recognize as agriculture for the outdoor grows? Can that be allowed without having trigger, you know, allow a cultivation site to be established without it being considered development and requiring a coastal development permit? So there's, they're working on that right now, but I do know that, that despite whatever policy position the Commission comes up with on that, development of any structure, a greenhouse, a hoop house, an indoor grow, in the coastal zone, requires a coastal development permit, either an administrative permit that is brought to this board, or it's a standard permit that goes through the coastal permit administrator and is subject to SEQA. That is...
Bottom line.
Like death and taxes.
Right.
In the coastal zone, you have a coastal development permit.
I can't remember who brought the coastal zone up. Okay. So just look up Coastal Commission, and if you want to see some really hardball being played, you can go to Marin County, and look at some of the ag operations there, and one has been put out of business because of what is desired and not desired on the California coast. All right. And I apologize, Corinne. I'm sorry, I've sat here for four hours, longer yesterday, so I was very bad, and I do apologize to you publicly. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? We're gonna let staff go home...
Oh, Matt.
Counsel.
Just to follow up on the idea of, you know, appeals going to the planning commission, I was doing some research earlier. I have nothing definitive yet. I think it's permissible, but we may have to do some additional changes or, to other areas of our codes and regulations to make that happen. So I'll keep working on that.
So that's, it'll be interesting to see if the supervisors think that's a great idea, and the planning commission think it's a bad idea.
Oh, we'll be in trouble. Okay, anyone else? Staff, anything? Thank you for all your hard work, your time you've put in. I know last night was very late after all the discussion at the board level, and here we have kept you after time again. We do appreciate your work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.